All right, we are live.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. It's good to see you all. It is.
One second, one second. Nicole hasn't caught up to me yet. Nicole, are you ready?
Keep getting this thing. What is this thing? What is it after? What is it?
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, we are now ready.
All right.
See everybody here. Yep.
All right, sounds great. Good afternoon again, everybody. I will call to order the March 11th, 2024 meeting of the Admiral County Planning Commission. And I will read, the public can access and participate in the meeting through information posted on the Admiral County website, specifically on the Planning Commission homepage and the Admiral County calendar. During the meeting, there will be opportunities for public comment on specific agenda items where input is invited. I will ask for the role to be called, please.
Yes. Mr. Bibbins.
Here.
Mr. Karazana.
Here.
Mr. Missile.
Here.
Mr. Claiborne.
Here.
Mr. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
We have Ms. Firehawk joining remotely.
Great, so perfect way to segue in. I will, I'm recognizing that Karen Firehawk has joined remotely. And Ms. Firehawk, I'll ask you if you would state your general location and reason for joining remotely, please.
Yes, thanks very much. I am joining you remotely from Providence, Rhode Island, where I am here on a business trip, working with cities to restore tree cover.
Awesome. Sounds great. The weather's as nice up there as it is here. It's pretty amazing. So with that, I'll ask, is there a motion to admit Commissioner Firehawk?
So moved.
For a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hey, we have the role, please?
Yes. Mr. Moore.
Hi.
Mr. Murray.
Hi.
Mr. Claiborne.
Hi.
Mr. Missile.
Hi.
Mr. Karazana.
Hi.
Mr. Bibbins.
Hi.
Thank you.
Great. All right. We will roll into the work session. And before we do, I'll just mention kind of a, I guess, a strategy on how we'll approach this. There'll be two staff presentations. The first staff presentation will be followed by a very brief time for us to ask that person questions. So if you have any specific questions, not so much statements on the document itself, but specific questions on the, on the presentation from Mr. Holt, I believe, that will be first. And then we'll turn it over to Ms. Kilroy to present the rest of the discussion this evening. So with that, I will kick off CPA 2021-2 AC44: Thriving Economy and turn it over to our awesome staff.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. I'm Ben Holt, and I'll be presenting on behalf of the AC44 team today. So before we dive into the chapter content, one second, just give me a minute to organize my notes. Mr. Chair, can I have five minutes, please? I've misplaced one of my documents. I needed to locate it from my speaking notes.
Sure, absolutely. Do we want to recess for five minutes or do we want to? We don't, probably don't want to flip-flop the presentations.
No, that's, yeah, that should be fine.
Okay, sure, five minutes. So we'll, I guess we'll officially recess for five minutes, come back at 10 after.
All right, we're live again.
All right, are we back? Great, welcome back.
All right, thanks again, Mr. Chair. Appreciate your flexibility.
No problem.
With that, I'll begin. And before we get into the chapter content for Thriving Economy that we'll be talking about today, I wanted to take a minute to kind of give a big picture snapshot of the AC44 project and how's, how it's going to tie into our future implementation efforts. As you know, the comprehensive plan contains many actions across the 10 AC44 topic chapters. These actions will be taken as a whole and evaluated to determine the key actions that will be used to inform the six objectives within the board strategic plan. And then the budget process will be used to determine how key initiatives will be funded. And that'll ultimately inform the department work program for how the county resources and staff efforts will ultimately be applied. So this, this process will be further discussed as we continue to refine this implementation pathway throughout the rest of the AC44 project.
Ask a quick question. I don't know if this is a fair question, but can you give us a general sense of the timeline? How, how many months we're looking at?
To have the strategic plan updated.
So each of these milestones, right, that comprehensive plan?
So we're hoping to have the last topic draft chapter published in June. So as you move into the late summer months and into the fall, then we're looking at adoption. So it's our hope to have AC44 adopted later this calendar year. I couldn't speak in detail about the strategic plan and what the timeline is for that.
Okay.
I don't know if Michael or, okay, yeah, so TBD with that effort.
Got it. So this isn't like the budget process for this year. This is a future budget.
This is looking forward, correct. Yeah, so that board strategic plan, once it's refined, it'll help us determine the CIP that will be used to implement AC44. And of course, AC44 will continue to inform that CIP effort moving forward since we're, we're talking about a 20-year horizon plan.
We're about halfway through the current board strategic plan, which is all encompassing of the county's local government functions. So that is, we're coming up on the start of, or no, we are three quarters of the way through fiscal year 25. And that plan goes through fiscal year 28.
Ah, got it. Okay, that's, thank, that's helpful. Thanks.
And so for today, I'm going to give a brief presentation on the thriving economy chapter. I'll keep it pretty quick so we leave plenty of time for discussion. And as you mentioned earlier, we'll also have a presentation from Emily Kilroy to my right on the strategic plan for, from the economic team. And so what we're going to focus on today with the work session and the feedback that you all will be providing, it's going to be centered on the chapter objectives and actions for thriving economy. And we're calling particular emphasis on objective two and the associated actions within it, since those focus on land use. So they're of particular importance. So in terms of previous feedback from both the commission and the board, prominent themes on this topic of the economy have included provision of land for target industries, along with the appropriate zoning designations for economic uses, and the need for sites that are development-ready, are ready for development, that have supporting infrastructure in place. And the lack of these types of properties were identified by our build-out analysis. Other themes include the need for affordable housing near employment areas, support for small businesses, the need for workforce development and economic uses in the rural area, such as tourism and outdoor recreation industry. Community input on this topic has identified the need for jobs that provide career growth opportunities within key industries and the importance of attracting new jobs to the area. There is also a desire to support businesses and entrepreneurs, including the provision of workspace availability, growing artisan and craft industries, and reducing restrictions for home-based businesses. Community members also echoed the need for land and infrastructure that supports economic uses and the need to utilize infill and adaptive reuse within our development areas, reducing barriers for site development. And another priority was workforce development, including career and vocational training by partnering with local colleges and technical schools, as well as providing the support services for local employees, such as childcare, housing, and providing a variety of transportation options. A thriving economy is also supported by other chop, chapter topics and county initiatives. Economic development is guided and supported by our growth management policy and the associated land use strategies within both the development areas and the rural areas. AC44 recognizes the Economic Development Strategic Plan as the primary document guiding the county's economic development and growth. Both AC44 and the EDSP, the strategic plan, reinforce connections to the board initiatives of equity and climate action. In terms of overall scope, the thriving economy objectives and actions provide high-level support for economic development, while the ongoing or pending economic strategic plan will provide more detailed implementation strategies for the local economy. The AC44 chapter will be refined by direction from the strategic plan and future revisions of the chapter will likewise be informed by the strategic plan. Our current draft chapter actions are more focused on land use and regulatory efforts, which are less likely to change with future strategic plan input. The thriving economy chapter overlaps with other topics, including the development areas chapter, which has an emphasis on the quality of life, dense development within the development areas, and a mix of uses. Whereas the rural area chapter includes guidance on tourism, agriculture, and forestry-related uses, as well as historic, cultural, and outdoor activities. The transportation and community facilities chapters emphasize the multimodal transportation planning efforts and the community infrastructure needs that are also critical to support a thriving economy. Some of the challenges addressed by the chapter are the need for industrial or light industrial zone land, the need for the, for site-ready land in a range of sizes and supporting different scales of buildings to support employment-related uses. The chapter also supports identified target industries, such as the local defense industry and others. And there's also a need to address barriers for work, employee support services for things like childcare, multimodal transportation, workforce housing, as I just mentioned. The chapter has five objectives, which are to implement the strategic plan as the primary document, again, for economic development and to ensure the availability of land and infrastructure for the employment-related uses, strengthening business retention and expansion, and especially for those target industries, and also support access for jobs, training, and career advancement to reduce those barriers to workforce participation. Overlapping and related actions within the rural area land use chapter call for the zoning ordinance update to allow uses that support processing and sales for agriculture and silver culture-related uses, as well as allowing small-scale businesses for services and daily needs through adaptive reuse of buildings and allowing low-impact outdoor recreation uses that complement and do not conflict with other existing rural land uses, such as ag and forest-related uses. Related actions within the development areas chapter include updating the zoning ordinance to support infill, adaptive reuse, and redevelopment, especially within our activity centers. And other actions include utilizing public-private partnerships to support redevelopment in underutilized areas, identifying and funding CIP projects that support activity center development, utilizing tools and funding sources, such as capital funding grants and community development block grants, or CDBGs, to support employment uses. And there's also an action recommending that the zoning ordinance update makes a provision to allow for data centers within the development areas only. And those would be restricted to industrial zoned land, and it would also be accompanied with performance standards that address and mitigated the associated impacts with that use. Stepping back and taking a quick look at the AC44 schedule and where we are, we will have a continued work session with the board on April 2nd to finish our discussion about revisions to the development areas land use chapter and community design guidelines. For thriving economy, we of course have a work session today, and our session with the board will be held on April 16th. We also recently held a virtual lunch and learn event for community members on February 27th. The community facilities and infrastructure chapter will be covered at work session with the commission on the 25th of this month, followed by the board's work session on April 16th. So at this point, I'm going to pause for any general questions you have regarding the chapter content. And again, please hold your detailed questions on the actions or your, your conversation topics for our feedback session at the end.
Great. Awesome. Thank you. Any questions? We'll start down with Commissioner Moore.
So I'm not looking at the ones with the, the bullet points, the, the one-point whatever, the two-point whatever. But I did have kind of, was looking at the land use build-out analysis page in that packet and saw that there are about 39 development area parcels that might qualify. Tell us more about what those parcels are, where they are, if there's like a map or anything.
I do not have a map on hand. And Tori, since you were more involved with that build-out analysis, do you recall whether a map was produced at some point to identify where those locations are?
Sure. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Tori Kinalopoulos, Principal Planner on the Long Range Planning Team. So we did not create a map of those parcels, but it was more of an internal review, looking at some criteria, like which properties would be big enough to accommodate, and you know, a business generating use for economic development, what already had zoning in place, like light industrial zoning, and looking at some of those criteria, where was infrastructure easily accessible? So it was meant to be kind of high-level informal, but just looking at some of those criteria and then looking at the space we have in the development areas that came out with, there's not, you know, many sites that are kind of ready to go from an economic development standpoint.
It's related to another question I had, which is the, this tier system, which we learned about a year or so ago when the EDO folks came by. And, you know, we've learned there's, there's one tier for site, I guess, North Fork, and then none that are tier five at the moment. How do those other 38 parcels kind of shake out in terms of tier one, two, or three, just roughly?
Yeah, that's a good question. I'd have to go back and look at the results in more detail. But I think, you know, a lot of them were, were kind of more at the, the two or three level.
I'm guessing we might get into more of that discussion over here.
Sure. That's totally fine. I was just, yeah, is that part of your?
Well, I can, I can offer just a little bit of context. I wasn't going to go over that specifically, but it's a good question. So there, so there's five tiers in the tier system. It's a system that the state has kind of adopted in coordination with engineering firms that work in the state. And it's just a way to help sort of have common language around how ready is a site. And so the tiers are really about the time in months to, to get to really cutting the ribbon. We love celebrating a ribbon cutting. And so tier five, there's a five-tier scale. Tier five is actually not often the end target that economic developers are focused on. It really is tier four. Tier five is, you're actually going and building a building or designing a building to be built by a future prospect. And when you, when you think about heavy industry or warehousing, those types of structures are, are more or less one-size-fits-all. But when you think about more specialized, light industrial or specialized industrial users, advanced manufacturing, it would be really challenging to design and or build a spec building. And so tier four is sort of that the site is cleared, it's graded, it's got a preliminary site plan. And so it's, it's very quick to get to vertical construction, but that vertical construction is very informed by the end user. So not everyone knows that five is not necessarily the target. So thank you for indulging me on that. And then, you know, going down from there, most of the sites in the county that would have been identified in that study, I imagine, would have fallen in the tier two and tier three place. Tier one is, it's basically raw land that's privately owned. Tier two is that the comp plan designation is, is aligned with what that future use could be. And the site is in public control or in control of a developer who is seeking to develop that site for an economic development purpose. Tier three, you've got the, your zoning in place, you've done all of the site due diligence. The Ravanna Futures Project, the, the land that the county purchased up adjacent to Ravanna Station in 2023, started at a tier one and is now, as of September 2024, a tier three. And we are working hard to get to tier four. So we're hope, we're hopeful that we'll be able to, to advance to tier fours, which is that you've got all your infrastructure in place, all your issues are sort of taken care of, and that you've done some, some entitlement work with the county. So it's kind of a mixture. And, you know, we're always kind of evaluating, you know, we've got, we have one tier four, and that's wonderful. We've got a plan to get to a second tier four with, with fairly large capacity in it. You know, then we'll start to focus on what are those tier two and tier three sites? Which ones are the most likely to be a tier four soonest? And how can we help be a partner in that?
It's really helpful. Thank you.
Great. Mr. Murray?
I'll hold my questions until later when we get all right.
Mr. Claiborne?
Well, thank you. I do have one question, and if it's not suitable for this, then maybe later just let me know. But it involves like the macro environment, particularly at the, the federal level now, and balancing that with a longer-term vision that you would have in a comp plan. Is there any, are there any conversations in the economic development department that you're able to share that we should be aware of in terms of target industries in light of cuts that are happening, at least for the next four years, we know, cuts that are happening there or reliance on federal funds, whether it's through the block grant program or whatever it is? Anything that we need to be aware of that might influence how we might approach a conversation around land use?
That is a wonderful question. So in terms of, you know, right now is budget, it's budget season. So the county executive recommended budget came out about two weeks ago. The board is really just getting into work sessions this week on it. And so they're, they're talking a lot about the federal, the county's sort of exposure to federal funding. What does that look like? What are opportunities that we have? What grants do we currently have that may be at risk? The staff is studying that really hard. The landscape evolves fairly rapidly. But not something that government is typically accused of. But, but so the, you know, the county's budget overall, especially when, if you're just focusing on local government and not necessarily thinking about the public school system, it's a little bit different of a makeup. But federal revenues are a relatively small portion of the county's overall budget. And so, you know, the federal funds that we do have are connected very heavily to specific programs. And the county has a couple of different reserve funds available to help absorb a shock that, that may come from a rapid shift in funding availability. So those are, those are conversations that the board is having right now. From an economic development standpoint, you know, again, we're also sort of watching closely what's happening. There's a lot of announcements that get made. And then, you know, a couple of days later, a couple of weeks later, the story will shift a little bit about the scale or the impact or the magnitude or orientation of that. And so we're continuing to look at the things that are, that feel like they're permanent and happening and looking at how we can be responsive to that. The Ravanna Futures Project, you know, specifically adjacent to a, a federal installation, obviously has some impact there, and we're focusing really hard there. We have great partners at the state and the federal level that are helping us understand what some of those on-the-ground impacts might be. And, you know, as things become real, we feel like we're in a good position to be responsive. But, you know, the good news is economic development is often thinking about the longer term and not so much focused on the next 12 months. But what does the next three to five years look like? And what, how can we be a good, stable partner in that? And so I, I have very high hopes that we'll be able to navigate whatever challenges we find ourselves navigating in the, in the next couple of years.
Thank you. So that's informative. So in terms of our discussion, we should assume, for example, defense will continue to be a primary target area as we think about land use and things like that.
That's the assumption that we are working with.
Thank you. Thank you. And thank you for the clarification on the, on the tiers, because that's where my questions were, were going as well. Just better understand, because that tier five, to me, just seemed like it was already a, a building that was designed and ready to, to occupy. So, yeah, somebody's going to have to develop that. The, when you're looking at, at the opportunities, were university properties there in the county considered at all?
In terms of the build-out study?
Because I heard there's only one North Fork as.
Foundation and university-owned properties? Yeah, I know the foundations.
So was Fontaine included in, in this evaluation at all?
So the evaluation, yes, was looking at the overall build-out included property owned by the UVA Foundation, but not by UVA itself. And as far as the build-out, it was generally not including places that we knew already had an approved development and we're building out. So we took that into consideration, but didn't necessarily assume, you know, a major redevelopment, that it would just kind of continue with its capacity. And like Fontaine was recognized as having more capacity.
Opportunities within the county that already have a planned development, you're not counting that?
We counted them separately versus a new, you know, build-out that hadn't been submitted yet.
Because I, I think there's a, that, that's an important piece that maybe should be included that, that, because there's opportunities within the county that maybe you're not accounting for, and it might diminish. Because right now, it seems like it's a diminished opportunity for these kind of developments, when actually I think there's a lot more out there. My other question has to do with redevelopment sites. And how are we considering those? I mean, they have the infrastructure. I'm thinking some of the ones along 29, right? They're empty spaces right now and empty, old box stores and so forth. How is that, how, where does that fall into the rankings or the opportunities to develop them?
So for the build-out, we looked at where the land value was higher than the structure value as far as redevelopment. And that did actually, for one tangible example, it picked up that property that I think was a recently approved rezoning that's taking an old office building and turning it into maybe 15 or so residential units and then an office building below. So it was able to pick up some things like that. But I think we would want to do a more in-depth study with some other areas that could redevelop, where maybe they won't get picked up, you know, by the analysis. But we could do a more in-depth study and see what's feasible. And that's something that we're definitely looking at doing this year as an update to that build-out analysis and taking some of these things into consideration.
Okay, thank you. I, I think that would be helpful in not putting out a narrative that we have this limited supply to, to accommodate these types of functions, where I think there's a lot more opportunities within the county.
Mr. Bibbins?
Thank you, Chair. I was just looking for a definitional issue or definitional clarity, clarification, please. So when we talk about the development district or the development area, in my mind, I tend to think of that as a place that we can house people. And so when you talk about light industrial and, and commercial areas, is, is that land mass that's in addition to the development area? Or so, or is that land mass which is included in the development area? And if it is included in the development area, then I will say again, we don't have enough land mass to do the kinds of things that we need to do. And so that's my, I know people are probably going crazy about me saying that. But if you're looking at sort of 20 years' worth of growth, and we're already in a constrained amount of area that we're trying to push density into, density in commercial and light industrial don't appear to have enough land to sit on. Well, everybody, you can be mad at me about that, but that's what I think. And you figure out a way to put it on it, and then you can make me feel better. But right now, I don't feel better.
You know, I, I think, I think in, in just a, it's follow-up, and I think this were an analysis of the areas that we have. And that's why I think it's, it's not quite
ready.
accurate right now.
It's not ready.
We're looking at a very limited, when I, when I actually just do a quick thinking about lands and university and, or, or, or foundation, there's actually more capacity for building, particularly if you build. there's actually more capacity for building, particularly if you build dense, if you densely build, than what is being called out for, it's like 1.9 million or square feet, you can get to that.
Easily.
Easily.
Pretty easily, pretty easily. In areas that are zoned for, for this type of work within the development areas.
Absolutely. And that's exactly my concern. I don't know how we, I don't know how we accommodate sort of the, the very conservative population growth that's come out of the welding coupons center. I mean, it's not talking about large, it's not talking about large influx of individuals. And also try to grow economics in this area to accommodate just sort of to, to provide an alternative to real estate taxes. Let's just use it that way, just to balance real estate taxes. I don't see how we have enough land to do that in a, in an effective way. And when we get to the economics, when we get to the economic development with, with Ms. Kilroy, I, I will, I will sort of expand about why I think there's, there's, there are holes in that idea that that's, that this is going to happen in a meaningful way.
Mr. Chairman.
Everybody again? Just have a couple of quick questions. One, can you go back to slide 13, please? I just didn't fully understand. Can you talk a little bit, so number 4.2, update zoning ordinance regs to allow rural light industrial and commercial uses supporting so retail sales appropriate with, with, with ag and okay, silviculture uses. So is this ag forest on rural communities?
Yes, this would be.
A little more detail.
Yeah, this would be sort of industry supporting uses within the rural area. Something, an example could be something along the lines of some sort of canning operation that would be used for food processing.
Got it.
But I think there's a limited amount of uses specifically allowed by right within our current zoning. And so we're trying to target some of those opportunities that are appropriate for the rural area.
For those specific areas.
Excuse me, Mr. Salt, Miss Firehawk would like to speak.
Thank you. Thank you. Just one other thing, just to call out what I think is the obvious here. The Economic Development Strategic Plan is ongoing. This will layer some of those into some, some of the Economic Development Strategic Plan will inform this AC44 document, right? So it's working a little bit ahead, which is different than some of the other plans, like the Rural Area Plan and some others that will trail behind the AC44 plan and therefore not be as informative to the AC44 plan.
I, I think the development and completion of the strategic plan may provide us more information that would lead to further updates of this section. I think the intent here is to be a little bit higher level in the Conference of Plan, provide for some broader guidance that helps have some long-term viability. But the strategic plan is really the substance of the actions. So some actions in some areas are kind of light here with the expectation that those things really belong in the strategic plan. And this section too, much like other sections, there's many other economic development related actions as we've just shown you. There are more. We just listed some of the examples of those.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Ms. Firehawk?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to make two quick points, if I may. One point is that as we think about what land is available for, for economic development. I mean, we do have quite a few parcels that are underdeveloped. So I'll give you an example. If you look at Avon Street Extended, and you see there's a lot of single story, there's a number of single story businesses, you know, various like Leap and other businesses that have, you know, very, very low density development on those parcels. And so what's the incentive to redevelop those? The county might want to think strategically about ways to get those developed at higher density by things such as having a, you know, a tax break. If you increase the density of structures and you give someone a tax break for a few years on the real estate taxes, that that would perhaps incentivize that. So thinking about the fact that we do have spaces where the land is not being efficiently utilized, there's also issues with our zoning, and I think that's been brought up tangentially today that, if you recall, there was a, a development where somebody wanted to have a a business, a recording business, but they also wanted to live in the space. And we had to give them a special, a special use permit for that. We could make a lot of those, those types of uses a lot easier. And then the last thing I wanted to note is that one of the challenges with a lot of our spaces, is it, we have a lot of older space? And so I can tell you that, you know, running a tech business myself, looking at the spaces available, they all need, a lot of them needed extensive rewiring that would cost thousands of dollars. We have spaces that don't have elevators to the second floor, which means they're not disability access available. And actually, many federal grants won't allow you to rent those spaces unless you have appropriate access. So there's a number of improvements that could be made to the infrastructure of existing businesses that would make them more attractive. And then also thinking about creative zoning as well as densify, incentives to densify the space that we do have. That's, that's all I wanted to add. Thank you.
Great points. Thanks. Any other questions for staff before we move to Ms. Kilroy? All right, Emily, it's all yours.
Thank you all so much, and thank you for letting me sit up here. It's nice to be up here.
All right, so we, David Venish and I were talking about how to best approach the Thriving Economy Chapter discussion with the Planning Commission because of the reliance and Chair Missel has highlighted the tension between relying on a strategic plan that does not exist.
Yeah.
And we talked, we talked a bit about, you know, do we, do we talk about the strategic plan that we have and then come back? And we felt like it might be more efficient if we, just given how close those timelines are, to focus on the things that we know from the plan that we're, that we're currently working through. And we, we don't have a final adoption date nailed in just yet. But just for your awareness, we're looking at an August adoption by the Board of Supervisors. So we do think that this, that the strategic plan will be final ahead of the AC44 comp plan. So any, any adjustments that need to be handled, we certainly can work through that. I'll take the next slide. Okay, so just a quick backdrop on why economic development is important and why folks focus on it. Again, it's currently the county's budget season, and so we're, we're looking a lot at sort of where our revenues are coming from. The federal revenues are one area that we look at. Another area that we look at is the, the sort of the balance, the mix between residential and commercial tax revenues. Person, property tax is the largest area of revenue for, for Alamooral County and most local governments, frankly. But that, having a good mix is helpful because commercial, commercial properties can, if you look at what the cost to provide services to a, a commercial property versus a residential property, generally you'll see that a commercial property is going to generate more tax revenues than it's going to require to serve that property. Now, there's a lot sort of embedded in that. Obviously, the people that work at those commercial buildings, you know, may live and generate residential demands. But it's just sort of just a big picture. That's sort of one of the things that we think about. And that's one of the reasons why economic development is an area that most local governments have, have investments and, and resources into. This is just a kind of a silly infographic that tries to sort of lay out. The items in red are generally, you know, quality of life items. And they, you know, parks, infrastructure, public safety, housing, quality, general quality of life. And, and when you have a thriving business community, they can really drive revenues that can help sort of reinforce and help support some of the other things that we know and love about Alamooral. So the role of economic development is really to, to take a look at how can we, how can government be a good partner? How can we help support a thriving business environment? And how we do that is, is really driven by our strategic plan. So some localities, small towns, their economic development strategic plan is really going to be focused on Main Street retail type opportunities. Localities that have a big tourism economy are going to focus a lot on how can they continue to drive up tourism activity in their area. And we are frankly, very lucky. We have a number of different areas that we can point to where we have some really great opportunities. And the strategic plan is going to help us really determine where we should focus. Where are our largest opportunities? We, given that, no matter where you are, you only have so much land to work with. And so what can we, what can we do to make sure that we're sort of doing right by the community? Take the next slide. That is not showing great. That's okay.
One second.
It's just words.
I'll, I'll switch the background if you want to go ahead and.
Okay. So the mission of economic development is to attract financial resources into the community through responsible activities that enhance the county's competitive position. And really, we're focused on quality job creation and career employment opportunities. That helps us increase the tax base. In, in Alamooral, we focus on enhancing natural resources and community character and improve quality of life for all. So what does that actually look like in practice? We're already through the slide.
I was caught up.
There we go. So I like to talk about three things that, that we have been focused on over the past several months. One is job creation. This is a photo from a governor's announcement that happened at Afton Scientific. It's on Avon Street Extended. Tom Thorpe and his company have, you know, they started here, they grew here. They are getting ready to really grow here. Really exciting opportunities in, in the work that they're doing to help provide medicine to, to folks with a variety of diseases. Their, their, their business is on the inject, on the delivery injectable mechanism. So they're not developing drugs, but they're making sure that they get to consumers. So a really important piece of the supply chain of pharmaceutical industry. And, and they have, they've announced 200 jobs, $200 million capital investment in building a new facility next to their existing one. And they continue to look at what are some additional investments that they can, that can make happen. And so we think that's really just the beginning. One of the things that's really exciting to me about Afton Scientific is that the jobs that they're creating are not just PhD jobs. In fact, they're not primarily PhD jobs. They have some folks on staff who have that level of education and acumen. But at the heart, it's really an advanced manufacturing type facility. And so the lion's share of the jobs that they have are in, in that space and really accessible to a really broad spectrum of the community. There's a grant that the county's partnering with Seville Biohub and many other of our local economic development partners to help understand how we can better align the training and the educational opportunities at high schools, community college, and also the university to make sure that our, our community members are well positioned to be able to take advantage of those job opportunities. The next one is redevelopment. So we talked a little bit about this, or you all talked a little bit about this in your comments. And Ms. Cantolopoulos referenced looking at properties where the improvement value is below the land value. We partnered with The Home Depot over the summer to do a public-private partnership to help make their store at Fashion, the Fashion Square Mall property happen. And one of the reasons that that was so important was Home Depots can open on green fields and often do open on green fields. That's really more their model. They were interested in coming to Alamooral County and redevelopment sites were really what they were finding. And those come with some additional expense. As you look at making some upgrades, there were some remediation issues related to the Sears Auto function that had operated there for many years. And so the, the cost to develop that property was, was going to exceed what they normally would expect from a site that size. And so the county partnered with them on that. And the county typically hasn't really focused hard on a retail strategy. But in this case, we looked at the redevelopment opportunity. You, you look at cities and counties across the Commonwealth and the, the funding that they put into public-private partnership agreements to try to compel a developer to come and, and please redevelop our aging mall was pretty significant. And here we felt like for a fairly modest investment could help unlock and sort of trigger that redevelopment that we do expect will be sort of a first domino on that property as we look to its future. So we're really excited about that. Next one. The other one is really just planning for the future. So Ravanna Futures is, is, is one piece of that. The, the defense sector in our community, in the regional economy is $1.2 billion each year. That's second to University of Virginia.
Your slide supposed to change, or is this correct?
This is correct.
Oh, oh, gotcha.
The, and so the Ravanna Futures is really an investment in creating an additional tier four site. Again, a tier four site of scale. We have several hundred acres there, 172 are zoned right now for light industrial and commercial through the work that we've done and you all have helped do over the past 18 months. And, and this is just continuing to try to look at how can we stay ahead? How can we build opportunities that we can bring partners to the table to then really make some, some impactful things happen? Take the next one. The first economic development strategic plan the county ever had was called Project Enable. This slide just shows some of the metrics on some of the work that we were able to do through that. So we'll often partner through the Economic Development Authority to provide grant funding matches to state opportunities to land business retention and expansion programs, job creation. There's an agricultural infrastructure grant. And so this is just some of the by the numbers from the first plan. On the next slide, the, this is kind of what we're starting off with now. We are taking a real data-driven approach to our work this time. And I'll share a couple of data points with you in just a couple of slides. But we are working with a firm called Resonance, and they have both a data-driven and an engagement approach. So it's very much in shaping, using the data to help shape conversations and then to understand from stakeholders what their priorities are. Take the next one. This is a, just a quick look at the process that we're, that we're using. The, there's four main elements outlined here. It's a fairly iterative process though, so you know, a little bit of data, talk about it with stakeholder engagement, and then go back out, do some more data analysis, talk with stakeholders, and develop a plan from there. The next slide. Just a couple of data points from some of the initial data work that we've gotten from, from Resonance that I think might be of interest to the Planning Commission and with respect to thriving economy. So one takeaway that they had from the data was that Alamooral County has strong economic growth, but workforce participation is lagging behind its peers. Take the next slide. And, and you can see from here that, that based on some peer localities that we identified throughout the process that we've done, our unemployment rate is, is very low. It's, it's what economists would consider full employment, which is not a bad thing. But when you look at that and you look at the rate of job growth, so we've got 11% job growth over a five-year period, 2018 to 2023. When you have high job growth and full employment, you're, you're potentially facing some labor shortage crunches. And so that's something that the data has produced for us. The next one is, is related in some ways. So Alamooral County has a highly educated workforce. You all are probably very aware, we have some of the highest bachelors, masters and above credentials in the country. But our prime working age population is underrepresented. So on the next slide, you can see that this is just a, just a clip of our population, age 25 to 44, so mid-career professionals. It's not their first job, it's not their last job. We are behind the Commonwealth, the United States, all of our peers that we, that we included in this study. And, and our median age is very high. So you can see, and we know, we have a, a large retirement age population in, in Alamooral. But, but we're also seeing, there's some, there's something going on that, that you have working mid-career professionals not in our community. And if you look at the city of Charlottesville, you see the same thing. So it's not just that young professionals are choosing to live in the city, but it's, it's a, it's a regional challenge that we're, that we're looking at. The county has strong innovation assets and one of the fastest growing STEM job markets among its peers. A lot of that has to do a lot with the University of Virginia and a lot of the research that they're doing there. And a real, really wonderful focus on commercialization, translation from the university setting out through entrepreneurship. The next slide just shows the STEM growth, STEM jobs growth rate. When you look at sort of When you look at sort of where we stack among our peers, we're, you know, high, middle, but that growth rate over the past several years has been very substantial. And those are the slides that we prepared, just wanted to kind of show the type of work that we're doing. And I think we'll turn it over to you all for discussion.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. How do we want to go about this? Anybody want to kick off the general discussion? Karen, you have your hand up?
No, she doesn't.
Anybody want to start us off?
I have a, I have a suggestion on one of your slides.
Yes, sir.
On slide, uh, on slide six, I would consider removing K-Tech since you're probably aware of the tension with the county over that institution and put PVC, which you know about, given what you just shared with us, PVC might help to fill that, 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 that space in a different way than K-Tech would be. And it would also be something that I know that the county's been sort of embracing in a, in a very different way than how they were rebuffed from the K-Tech arrangement. I, I would ask if you know anything about how, any information that's available to you from our experience with opportunity zones.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Our, the county's experience with opportunity zones.
Opportunities, got it.
We didn't do very well. We didn't do very well at all. The one piece that took advantage of the opportunity zone is a property across from the, the Fifth Street Office Building, County Office Building, where there was to be a very interesting set of buildings there to do exactly the kind of, to house exactly the kind of individuals that Ms. Kelroy spoke, spoke about. Sort of, you know, high biotech, da, 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 people who were going to take things to market. And the only thing we have now is the perpetual self-storage facility. Everyone knows how I feel about the perpetual, the church of the perpetual self-storage facility. And so the whole idea about what we, how that didn't happen here is something that I think might be helpful as you think about how do we attract businesses here to this, this place? Because we did not do well. In fact, we didn't do anything here. I can give you a couple of things on, on your page, on your, on, on, on your, on your page four, sort of target industries. And I broke this down as I was thinking about target industries in sort of three different ways. And you gave me the name for the, for the, for the last, the last category. So when I look at our historic, when I look at our target industries, there's sort of the historic industries that have evolved after, after what I would say, the reshaping of Albemarle County to more of a retirement community. Okay. Cause we weren't that for a long time. We were in fact, a place that had a, had a distinct sort of, as, as, as Ben said, we had industries that supported our agriculture businesses here. And that most of, a good deal of them were in, a good number of them were in the Crozay area. That's now housing, but they were scattered throughout, throughout the, throughout the county. And so there's this whole issue here about what are historic industries? And I think on page, page four, you list the amount of what the sort of current state is. Okay. I would share with you that I feel that every single, forget what the, I think what we are, 9%, I think somebody said 9% is what the county is with regards to federal funding, something like that. It's a very minuscule amount. Every single one of them could die tomorrow based on a, based on a, a Washington DC foible or folly. That's probably a better word for reason, a folly. Okay. Northridge Grumman could go south depending on what they're saying, what they're going to do with the, with the defense industry. I'm not even going to talk about what's going to, what could possibly happen in that wonderful space that we, with that, but I, up, up on, on, on north. But if the University of Virginia, if Centerra, if they make significant changes to Medicaid, that would basically gut those two organizations in some very serious ways. Crutchfield Corporation is a private corporation of which depending on Bill Crutchfield could close tomorrow when he says he's had enough. Okay. Atlantic Coast, the, the ACC and Farmington, those are private entities of which at some point, the members of both of them may say, we're not paying any more money for dues. You're not increasing our dues anymore. And therefore they're going to go into a steady state. And I'd say that's, I can't speak to the board's head, you can speak to the board's head. And so, but my, my point here is that many of these are dependent upon federal money and federal decisions that will have impact on who gets employed. And if they get laid off, what happens to that housing stock? As we're starting to see, as you saw, you may have seen the, 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 the chairman of the supervisors in Paravox County sort of approached the governor and said, you need to stop, you need to be more active in stopping the closing of federal buildings. Because if those federal buildings close, people will lose their jobs, they will lose their houses. We will not, houses will go into, to, to foreclosure. And we will, we, that will undercut our tax base, which will mean we won't have the things to do other things. And that's the piece that I'm concerned about here, that these target industries, while they're interesting industries, they're not, they're not like the ones that you mentioned, Afton Scientific, which is somewhat like that. There's a building out on our airport road that I think is called Micro U.
Micro Air?
Micro, Micro Air, which is similar in type, these are similar type businesses. But they make the things that actually help people in healthcare. Right, right. And so, and so that's the kind of business that has, in, in fact, has a, a, a diverse employment that isn't all PhDs, that isn't all MBAs, and I'll throw myself in there, that aren't all lawyers also, that they have this sort of, this eclectic group of people there, which I think helps the community sort of prepare a workforce for them. And so looking at your aspirational industries is something that I would encourage you to do. Because that's really shaping the conversation about how do, how does the county invest its funds in bringing people here and also working with educational institutions. And that's, that's a bit of a, you know, that's somewhat unnerving to people because you're saying we're sort of thinking about what the future is, but there's enough smart people in this community to help think that for you, you have access to them. My, my concern is when you talk about, when you, when you looked at this, you gave us the piece on the low unemployment and high job. Many of us who've had to hire people know exactly what that is. Most of the new job growth in Albemarle County in this area is because we import people. We don't grow people. And so when you see low unemployment, a high growth rate, that's all about people coming from someplace else to fill those jobs. I can't begin to tell you offline, I could tell you about the number of people, then we go to your mid-career professionals who can't afford to come here for a whole host of reasons. Even if I give you a house, they don't want to live here because the quality of life here for a single person is not the same even as our sister city down in Richmond. The quality of life for a single person in Richmond is leagues better than a single, a quality of life for a single person in Albemarle County. It's just, it's a better place to live. And so I'd even say even in Lynchburg, it's, it's, it's because there's just a more diverse sort of opportunity. So when you're looking at the things that, what are we doing? It's not just about can we get you a job? But if you come here when you're not working, those few five hours on a Saturday afternoon, when you're not working, what could you do? What is here? And this is where my colleague at the end, Mr. Morris, like what is the community kind of spaces that you can bring people together, that we can bring people together, sort of say, this is a place where you want to live? And you've heard many of us talk about, we're sick and tired of tot lots because there's a whole host of people who are never going to use a tot lot. But that's an amenity that we insist that they have. In fact, we know it's not because we, if we look at the live birth rate in Albemarle County, it's declining. So we have all these hot lots which are increasing, the live birth rates which are decreasing. And so we're doing these things, which is just sort of counterintuitive to if you're wanting to attract people in their 30s, you know, high twenties, mid thirties, and you want them to lay roots here. Because it's hard for somebody to lay roots here if they don't have, have a number of things to do. I'm just sort of giving you my thoughts here. So that's a real easy way to say low, low unemployment, high job growth, that just, and, and they're filling those jobs. They're bringing people in from outside and they're usually not in their 30s either. They're usually not in their 30s. If you just look at who's coming into private schools and the public schools, they're coming in with children, they're coming in, you know, so they're not coming here saying, oh, this is my first job. The other thing that I would, I would just sort of suggest as you're looking at this is to really be able to say to the community that you wrestled with the data, that you have, you're not, this is not your gut. But may start with your gut, the assumption may start with your gut, or the hypothesis may start with your gut, but you really are going out and validating this because I think that will help in the adoption and the appreciation of the amount of work that's gone into this. You know, I, I always get this thing wrong, but we do this count, and sometimes Mr. Moore knows better than I do what it's called. I just, maybe others will. We do this countywide, the countywide service, survey. It talks about how, what kind of degrees do you have? How much money do you have? Do you think the county's doing okay? Do you think you're better? I forget what that survey is called, but we do the survey, like every other year or something like that. If you look at the demographics of the survey, it is, it is clearly pitched towards older individuals, multi-degreed, making a lot of money in their lifetime, or having access to, having access to assets and having, or having access to income, and they are predominantly European in their birth. Now, we can wrestle with that any way we want to wrestle with it, but that's all self-reported data. Julian didn't say what your heritage, Julian didn't say how old are you, Julian didn't say, this is self-reported. So we, so what the community and, and realizing that everyone doesn't respond to those, to those, when we are sometimes not as broad in the gathering of information. And my colleague can talk to you about how we've gathered information here, Mr. Clayburn. But that's the kind of stuff that I think for the validation of this, of this particular piece, that I will now be quiet and let other people talk to.
Awesome. Thank you. Mr. Carazana?
Thank you for the presentation. Actually very informative. And actually I also appreciate you highlighting the Home Depot example. Cause I think that is a great success story and it embodies a lot of what we're talking about in AC44. We're talking about taking advantage of infill sites, redevelopment sites, and how we can partner with private industry to accomplish that and perfect example. The one thing I would add in, in terms of, that would further continue to embody some of the principles that, that we're talking about in AC44 is densification. And so as we look at what can continue to happen in, in the mall area, how can we encourage higher density? So not just one-story development now, I'm not, I'm not, the Home Depot is great. It is one-story, but it's, it's a great use of land, much better than, than going out in some greenfield site. So it's fantastic opportunity and hopefully we'll encourage more development there. So it can be, start to be the anchor that Sears was at one point. But how do we encourage higher density development? What we don't want to see is repeats of 50th, Fifth Street Station, right? Where we have this incredibly expensive civil engineering feat to, to, with enormous retaining walls to create all of this development land to then build one-story buildings. I mean, that could be three times as dense, four times as dense as it is. So I, so I think those are lessons learned that we need to embody and think about when we look at these. And that's why I, I think we're underestimating the capacity that we actually have when you, when you start to marry back to this chart of, I think we have like what, 3.4 in the high end, in the next 20 years, 3.4 million square feet of need. Right? If I, if you add up office, retail and industrial, 3.4 million square feet of need, if I, if I'm reading that right. I don't think that is, that is a challenge to achieve. I think you have more than 3.4 million dollar, 3.4 capacity within the county in those areas. And particularly if you think about the university. So I think that that's one area that I have a question and, I mean, I, I understand maybe the logic was a tax base, right? There's taxes coming from, from the foundation, but not directly from the university. However, if the emphasis is job growth and career enhancements, if that's part of the economic conversation, right? And I think the university should probably be part of that, even though you may not be getting direct tax revenue, you're certainly getting indirect tax revenue from the, the, the people that is being, that are being employed. So it's just something to, to, to think about. And I think my takeaway from Mr. Vivins, although there was a great, a lot of great insight there, is less tot lots and more pickleball.
Yes, there you go. Bring it. Oh my God. Yeah. Thanks Karen. Before we go to you, I just want to throw something into the mix that for us to think about. Cause we've been talking about UVA lands, we've been talking about foundation lands. Just to put some things in perspective that Emily's well aware of. And thank you Emily for partnering with us on so many things. And I told Luis, I was going to be careful about my role here as a private citizen versus the foundation. But there's an example that I think might be helpful to share. And that is that at North Fork, public knowledge, there is three, 3.7 million square feet of allowable industrial mixed use. And well, research, I mean, pretty much everything, light industrial, et cetera. And it's been there at 3.7 million square feet since 2010. Before that, it was 3 million square feet of allowed density and that dates back to the late 90s. We have built 650,000 square feet of that. And it's taken this long to start to feel like there is a wave cresting, right? And that's in large part due to some things that I think are obviously critical in this whole process. And that is primarily partnerships, right? So I won't take the time now, I've got some ending thoughts, some ending comments just to highlight. But to put it in perspective and to your point about capacity, there is three more, 3.7 million square feet available, say 3 million now at North Fork alone. So, and we've talked a lot about going up because the trick is, as everyone knows, this is Albemarle County. We can't just, it's not flat land. So we have in that 565 acres, proffered 200 acres of permanent open space. And still we're looking to fit 3.7 million square feet in there. So it's got to go up to make it work. Sorry Karen, you're on.
Yes, thanks. I wanted to underscore something that Julian said, said earlier, and then just tag on to what you just said. I think the affordable housing piece is really critical. Because I, as, as an employer, I hired five people in the last year. To your point, I had to import, import a couple of the tech people, couldn't find the skills here. But the biggest challenge, one of the bigger challenges is, is being able to tell people that they can buy a home here. And I just want to give the example of a creative use of, of funding. And I know that HUD is under attack by the current federal administration, but there was a, a community that partnered with John Deere Tractor, they could not find affordable housing for their workers. And so they were able to use CDBG funds, Community Development Block Grant Funds to buy down the, the costs, the mortgage costs and down payment costs for their employees, which allowed them to then attract employees to work at the factory and allowed them to become permanent residents of the community by using those funds to incentivize homeownership. So we often talk about workforce housing for teachers and firemen and policemen, and that's all really important. But just a regular, average paid person trying to move here for a job, it's just really difficult to make the case because housing is so unaffordable. So thinking about some of those creative partnerships or ways that we might subsidize, subsidize this. And then to the point about space, just actual space for firms to locate here. We have, as I've mentioned in the past, I'll just say it really quickly. We often have like a 400 square foot office or 40,000 square feet and not a lot in between. So we need to figure out ways to, and maybe this is going more into the economic development strategic plan, but we need to find ways to have incubator space and space that can flex so that your firm doesn't have to just either be two people or 75 people. But how can you find ways that people can grow that out over time? And that has to do with even thinking about some of the designs for new office spaces. I mean, I understand there's a lot of space at North Fork, but frankly, I've never needed that much space. And I know I'm just one small business person, but I think that you will find that we're not necessarily meeting the needs of sort of mid-level startups. So to, I guess, thinking more diverse in terms of the kinds of space that we have. But how can the county offer incentives to facilitate this? And then I already made the point about the fact that a lot of our space just simply needs modernization so that firms can move into it. So there's space that goes unrented because it's just not suitable. So perhaps we need to provide microloans or other opportunities to get that space to be more ready for today's current market. Um, so perhaps we need to provide microloans or other opportunities to get that space to be more ready for today's current market. So I know that was a lot, but I know it's hard for you to see my hand, so I'll stop now.
No, thanks. That's, those are all great comments. The one thing I'll add, you mentioned incubator space, you mentioned startups. And you, you mentioned the importance of thinking about ways to help to offset those costs or to incentivize them. And, you know, the point of an incubator space is that it's low-cost space. The developer has trouble making the pro forma work because you've got to still build out the space. Um, so I think those are really important points and maybe the county focusing on those startups, focusing on incubator, you know, and partnering with developers as much as possible in that area might be, might be helpful.
Well, Chair, you know, and, and many of these sort of grand research university communities, often it's the university that owns that space. If we look at the place that Uni- the University of Virginia used to want to be like, it was Stanford. And Palo Alto, most of the space that then sprung people to be the Googles, the Apples and things like that, it was owned, it's owned by Stanford. They get a piece of the action once it happens, but it's owned by Stanford. And that, and that's a, that's a different sort of model than we've typically had here. And, and I think it's also necessary to sort of go back to what you both were saying is that on page four, the document says that four or fewer employees are what make up the firms here.
Yeah.
That's, that's really.
It's telling.
Yeah.
Mr. Clayburn?
Uh, it was exciting to, to hear the direction of the strategic plan. So thank you for sharing that. Uh, I flagged three things as I was listening to the presentation here, my colleagues here. Um, the first, I felt that transportation and infrastructure, um, it's not hammered on enough. Right? So when you think of those who are underemployed or young professionals that want to, you know, live in a vibrant place, uh, the ability to have, uh, public transit infrastructure that's reliable, dependable, can get you where you need to be without waiting, you know, um, unorthodox amounts of time, right, to get there. I, I think that is something that, um, you might consider just like looking into more in terms of like emphasizing that piece. Um, the second thing I flagged is, uh, the conversation around being a trusted partner, particularly to those communities here in town that, um, are under-invested in, underrepresented. Um, lots of things have happened, whether it's here or Charlottesville, things have happened in some of our lifetimes that, um, are not forgotten, right? And so I think in order to, uh, do some of those things are in a strategic plan and, um, bring in other folks along who, you know, to come into the workforce. I think just working and investing in that relationship might be something that the economic development, uh, team might look at as a priority. And then lastly, um, just think of the concept of regionalism and not to compare us to DC, but when you think about how Northern Virginia, they band together and they get people like Boeing and Amazon to come here. There's this story about their strength in numbers and you kind of signal a little bit of that within the strategic plan. And I'm sure you all will continue to work as a region, right, to bring, uh, economic vitality here. But it made me think of how many times does a planning commission not work with the Charlotte, uh, Charlottesville Planning Commission or the surrounding counties that touch us as we're thinking about future land use, right? And so just flagging that both internally for, for our team here, but also from an economic development perspective. I'm sure there's conversations we ought to be having as we're thinking twenty years down the road as a region, um, that I feel like we're probably not having right now. So just thank you for, for flagging that. So that's about it.
Yeah, a long time ago, when I was saying in class at UVA and, um, one of the things that, that we talked about, actually it was in, uh, Brownfield redevelopment, um, is, is actually taught by a former county supervisor, uh, David Lesky, but yeah, so, so one of the, um, one of the things that, that we talked about, one of the many things we talked about is um, the kind of place that a Google employee, uh, would like to live and what, what attracts tech companies and other places to a community. It's not always necessarily what people think about. Um, it's access to nature and recreation, it's, it's walkability, um, cultural attractions. As you said, um, a good transportation network, um, and also, um, diversity and inclusion. Um, that's the kind of place that tech workers want to be in. I can say that also as a tech worker, that's the kind of place that I like to be in. So, so when we think about, um, and we also think about some of these things about the challenge of, of housing. Um, I think it's important that we think about, um, workforce housing as its own special kind of problem here because we really have two economies in Almaral County. We have those who, people who make their primary income off of their investments. And then we have wage earners and they're not the same people, but they compete for the same housing. And so the problem is, is that we can try to, to beg and control, um, be able to offer, you know, as much affordable housing as we want. But as long as s- uh, someone can move down from Northern Virginia and snap that up, up. Um, and they're not a wage earner, then the, the wage earners can't compete for that housing. And so I think what, what I've long wanted to see is for Almaral County to, to partner and actually proactively, maybe it's the university, I don't know how we build these partnerships, but talk about building actual dedicated workforce housing for people who work here. Um, I think that that would be a big advancement, um, for, you know, you know, I, I imagine, you know, maybe you have a, a group of, you know, a group of employers who, who say, like as Karen's saying, you can't find employees because they're too far away. Maybe they contribute some to this project. You have a local developer who's willing to, to build, build it. Maybe you have some county land, county could offer up. You know, maybe you have some sort of partnership that forms. I know there's a lot of grant opportunities as well that could be applied and there's specific grant opportunities for workforce housing. So some, something, something to think about.
Awesome. Thank you. Mr. Moore?
Thanks y'all. I've enjoyed the conversation so far and thank you for the presentation too. It was, uh, informative and thoughtful and it's a nice recap of kind of where we've been. I, I, um, I know the Home Depot project has some advantages to it, right? That they, they, uh, are, are plopping in a store that I see closer to fruition every day. Uh, and we were able to do sort of like a tax incentive to have the road behind it. Um, I don't know, and this is, I don't want to second guess everything the county has done for the last decade, but I do want us to think a little bit more as we go forward with this kind of thing in the future. We spent how long on that Rio twenty-nine, uh, study, that small area plan, uh, and then just kind of stuck it on a shelf. Uh, and it sat there for years until finally Home Depot, of all places, came in and bought it. And now Home Depot is going to put it in a store, which is not really in the plan to have a big box. Um, and they'll, you know, sort of show that it's a viable place to have a thriving store and they'll sell off the land. And maybe then in the distant future, we get something that looks a little bit like the Rio Small Area Plan. If future owners don't feel like just putting something else in by right. Um, so like I want us to think about how we can actually be more proactive on that kind of thing going forward. And if we're talking about a twenty-year plan, this is the time to think that way. Um, you know, Ravenna Station, I know the, the land around that is kind of where a lot of energy and certainly a lot of financial investment are going. We've already kind of made that choice, uh, and, and I think the last two months have made it look like, well, golly, I hope that still works. Um, because it may or may not be where future investment actually happens from the federal government. Um, but I don't know. The other thing about that particular choice is that does tend to lead to the kinds of jobs that import people. Um, not people that, as Commissioner Vivins put, uh, we, we create here, that we build here, but people that we bring in here. Um, you know, and so the people that kind of grow up here end up either a UVA in some capacity, uh, uh, or, or in the service sector in some capacity, if they can stay and afford to stay, which many of them cannot. Um, and so that's just like a little bit of like nuanced critique as we think about kind of how we invest in future things. Um, that, uh, yeah, yeah. And, and to me too, I, I want to kind of zoom out and I, I always think about economic development is like, it's the resources, it's the tools, it's the land that people need to, to meet their needs and lead flourishing lives. And so on that front, I do think that things like affordable housing is economic development. Um, I would say free and subsidized childcare for infants to pre-K is economic development. Um, high union membership rates are economic development, things that boost people's ability to lead flourishing lives. Um, and so in some of the, the sections on, uh, uh, Objective Four, I might include things like, you know, training and financing for co-op development, training and financing for, for small backyard developers to, to, you know, rezone and redevelop and, and add more housing stock. Uh, training and, and financing and, and, uh, for, you know, how to, if we, if we have a, a place with very high workforce, um, or rather very low unemployment, uh, and a lot of very educated people. I mean, like that's primed to, uh, another way to build wealth is, is through workers getting paid more. So that's why I bring up the union stuff. I know I'm in Virginia. I know that's not a state that has a historically real strong stuff there. But, uh, if we're talking about economic development, I talk about labor. So that's where it's at. Um, so I, I mean, again, I think, I think there's a lot good here. I think things like making sure we have adequate land supply and, and, and those, you know, looking toward those tier four sites, sure, certainly. Um, and I think also, uh, investing in, in people's needs and, and having that expansive view of economic development toward, uh, 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 the, the growth that, that people can stay.
Great comments. All right, I'll, I'll, uh, roll through a few thoughts. Um, I'm starting with, excuse me, this specifically the chapter. And I'm on page four. Um, the bullet, the second bullet on the right-hand side talks about continuing to strengthen existing business retention and or expansion. Um, as of June twenty-four, the county leveraged eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand to secure one point eight million in state grants, et cetera, et cetera. Can you talk, uh, just briefly about, well, with the time, why don't I just say this? Be great to learn some more about that. What is the proactive approach that the county is taking to continue to, um, incentivize strengthening existing business retention and what that looks like? Um, I think it's critically important. That paragraph didn't strike me as having much aspirational goal in it. It would be good to maybe think about what that might look like. Um, page five, we didn't talk, we talked a bit about defense. Here we didn't talk much about tourism. Um, but tourism is obviously huge and, um, needs to be considered. So as, as you think, and you do have this on page five, you've got both defense and tourism. Um, just, you know, continue, continuing to underscore ways to support and expand tourism opportunities in the area to help bring, um, to help bring that growth. Um, moving to page seven, um, I think we talked about most of this, but just the efficient use of existing space, et cetera, et cetera. We acknowledge the fact that while the, I think, build-out goal, the twenty-year demand was, what did you say, three point three, four million square feet? Three point four. Yeah, I mean, I don't know what the goal is for expanding Rivanna Futures. What is the capacity? Is there a build-out goal there, do you know, for square footage?
Uh, we think there's about a million square feet available there.
To tie that together with North Fork, there's four point three million square feet of land right in that one area. So I think that's obviously critically important. Um, and then going over to page ten, you asked us to focus on the objectives, especially, especially action or especially number two, the land use related stuff. Um, two point one, where it talks about maintaining adequate inventory of land use. Maintain an adequate inventory of land use plan designated in zoned lands for light industrial effects, et cetera. Prioritize maintaining existing designated and zoned lands over proposed to convert such lands to other uses. Um, I think that's an important one. I would just underscore that. Um, not really more of a comment there. Moving down to, um, action two point four. You mentioned in the last sentence, initiating county-led rezonings. Curious, I know of one, how, how many of those actually occur? Is that relatively new? Is it?
We haven't had a practice of doing that in the past. We've, we've usually let the private sector or the market dictate that.
Yeah.
I think as we emerge into the efforts to encourage and incentivize infill development, there may be a need to do that boost. If you go back to that tier category, one of the important ones is lack of zoning and the cost for rezoning. So
Yeah.
That's a pretty important land use tool that we have that could incentivize and make that space available and meet those density needs.
Yeah, for sure. Um, and I'm kind of cutting to the chase here with time, so.
Can I jump in there for two point seven?
Jump in.
Yeah, and so in, in two point seven, provide a full range of sites and structures to, so I think this is where a graphic will be helpful, where there's some kind of map that begins to show where the locations of these sites and
In, in a very
Illustrate that point.
In a very basic high level, that was trying to get it, I think, one of Karen's points and others, that we need that full variety from startup to corporate.
For instance, I would, I would also sort of like to see that linked up with the industries. For instance, on that same page that the chair was talking about on page five, where we talk about sort of the wineries and all that agribusiness out there. I'll say it again, if I want to go to a winery and I want to stay there, I have to go to Waynesboro. There is, unless I go to my colleagues, the Boar's Head Inn, but if I don't want to go to the Boar's Head Inn, I have no place that I can stay in that area except for the five R and B, or not five R and Bs, but the, the few home stays that are out there. That's not supporting the forty-five wineries, which most, which the epicenter is at, is most of this west of town. And so either we want it or we don't want it.
Um, couple other, it's on objective five point one. Update the zoning ordinance to reduce barriers to land uses. Um, I think that's kind of what you're getting at there and, and I would also, I guess it was flipping back to two, seven, Luis, you mentioned. You know, they're also thinking about incentives of promote and incentivize, to promote and incentivize the full spectrum of company businesses. Somehow thinking about how the county can incentivize those things as well.
Um, you know, taxes don't really do.
Yeah.
Tax abatements really don't do it because not, not, not enough is abated to flip the switch on the pro forma. The pro forma is not about tax, it's not about real estate abatements.
But a couple of other comments, and these are mo- some of these you've covered, these are mostly either to, uh, provide new ones, but also to consider, but also to underscore some things you've already said. So one, um, when you look at identification of sites and, and, uh, you know, tying that directly to user groups. So thinking about what, I mean, this is sort of a one-on-one, but whatever, what's out there, what are we seeing as needed, needs? And how can we then proactively think about the sites and the locations, tying those together? Um, leveraging relationships, somebody mentioned adjacent, uh, counties even, and I know there's work that's been going on with Green and the Innovation Corridor, et cetera, but thinking about partnerships and whether they should be somehow mentioned in here. Um, infrastructure aligning that with uses, we've talked about that. I think, you know, one of the things that, I, I, again, sort of a personal story of my profession or where I work, I've learned that it's really helpful to be taught, like the, the resources that are there. For example, state grants that are available for tier four ready sites. I didn't know they were even available. And, you know, I'm sure a lot of other people, there, there are grants out there. So thinking about an education program as part of this that might help, um, you know, almost like you, you could come in if you're interested, if you're a developer, here's a, here's a, uh, a learning session or conference you could go to that teaches you the opportunities that are there for, um, financial support, uh, and incentives. Um, we talk about incentives, we're not just talking about, uh, financial incentives, we're also talking about time and the amount of time that it takes to rezone things, obviously, we talk about is, is a lot. So thinking about a, an equitable way, because I always hesitate to say expedited review, because then the next guy says, well, why didn't you expedite my review, right? But so thinking about an equitable way to help expedite process, the zoning process where, where necessary. Being adaptable to the market, um, housing and housing availability obviously being critical. Um, and I think with that, I will stop. So Steph, thank you very much. It's really helpful and we're looking forward to next steps. Thank you. A great comment. Thank you. Sorry, did you ever?
Oh, I did, I did have some more things.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, I mean, one, one of the things I just, you know, as I mentioned, we had the Parks and Rec chapter. Um, one of the things is just, I, it'd be nice if you do call out the importance of the recreation economy, but then there are no action items associated with it. And I, I understand that some of those will be in other chapters, but they should go somewhere. Um, you know, as, as we said before, um, that's, it's a significant amount of money, um, that, that people spend on those sports. I know that, you know, runners spend an average of, um, one thousand five hundred dollars each on their sport. Heck of a lot of runners in Almaral County. You know, bird watchers spend even more. Um, so I think quantifying that amount, I don't think we have really good numbers locally right now about how much we're really spending on our recreation economy. It'd be good to have those numbers, particularly when we do the park needs assessment. So sort of tying those two things together would be really important. Um, I think too, um, it, it would be nice to see some maps here. The, the other thing that I wondered too is, um, you know, in Croze, one of the challenges that we have is we have former industrial sites, some of which are contaminated. And, and although I know right now the grant And, and although I know right now the grant opportunities from the federal government are probably slim, this is a twenty-year plan. So I know there are, there have been grants through Rickra. You know, outfield redevelopment grants to address contaminated sites. Anything we can do to, to look at that and Croze, in other areas where we have those contaminated sites as redevelopment opportunities, I think would be really positive. One of the comments too that I've heard from people in Croze, particularly as it relates to transportation, and they say, oh, the the transportation network is insufficient, you know, we all commute from Croze to Charlottesville and, and the, the roads just can't accommodate all of us traveling from Croze to Charlottesville. Well, my, my first thought when I hear that is not, well, well, obviously we need to make bigger roads, you can all get to Charlottesville. It's why are we not attracting the employment opportunities to Croze so that these people do not have to commute? Yeah. And so I think in our analysis of where we want to really attract jobs, we also need to really think about where are those places where people are commuting a significant distance? Where we should maybe infill some of those jobs because, you know, as, as you said before, or alluded to, the, you know, a lot of the, we lose a lot of money in sprawl. You know, residential, residential sprawl costs us millions of dollars. You know, whereas, whereas, you know, commercial land has surplus of, of seventy million that it adds to our economy. So really trying to attract those, those businesses back. I mean, Croze used to be an industrial community, used to have Morton Foods, used to have those, those things, and we really lost a lot by having them. And the other thing would be related to agriculture. I would hope that, you know, I think there could be some real opportunities in reaching out to the agriculture community and ask, what are the barriers to them getting their products to the market? You know, they did this in Highland County and the result of that was was several things, including Allegheny Meats, a small-scale processing facility that helped them get their, their products to market. That might not be the solution for Alamo County, but we need to ask the question, right? What, what is the barrier that we can solve? Then the last thing, environmental services, I know because with the groundwater conservation district, we spend a lot of money on people fencing cattle out of streams, installing wildlife habitat, converting lawn to native plants. You know, a, a lot of environmental practices. It's a lot of money. And I've seen all the jobs associated with these environmental programs. And then also every housing development goes in, people putting in rain gardens and biofilters. And it just occurs to me that, are we really training youth in Alamo County to take those jobs? You know, and it would be nice to coordinate that better so that when, you know, a a student at Western Alamo, that's maybe going to, through the Environmental Studies Academy there, would actually be, you know, learn how to make a biofilter or a rain garden, or learn how to convert lawn into native plants, you know, that, that we're tying, maybe even working with PBCC on some of that to provide some of those jobs.
Awesome. All right. Thanks, everybody. I will put us into recess and we'll reconvene at six P M. Thank you. Great. Good evening, everyone. You can take your seats. I appreciate it. I will reconvene the planning commission meeting for March eleventh, twenty twenty-four. And we have established a quorum. We have Commissioner Firehawk online. And so we are complete. So with that, I'll move on to the fourth item on our agenda, public comment and matters pending before the commission. Are there any matters from the public not listed on tonight's agenda for public input? Anybody who would like to speak tonight on items that are not on our agenda? Okay, nobody online, nobody signed up. Very good. All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a commissioner who would like to either make a motion or pull any of those from consent agenda? Anybody like to make a motion?
Don't move, Chair.
Second.
Great. Any discussion? All right, maybe we have the roll, please.
All right. Mr. Moore.
Uh, aye.
Mr. Murray.
Aye.
Mr. Claiborne.
Aye.
Mr. Missile.
Aye.
Mr. Carazana.
Aye.
Mr. Vivins.
Aye.
Ms. Firehawk.
Aye.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. With that, we'll go into the public hearing portion of the meeting and we will start with S P two thousand twenty-four dash one. Croze Independence Day Celebration.
Good evening. Thank you, Rebecca Ragstale, and I'll be giving you staff's presentation and going over what this request is and what we need to cover. So this is the Croze Independence Day celebration, excuse me, it's a request for a temporary event. That is category in our rural areas. Zoning District for those events that are larger, one-time, need extra planning and attention. And we want to make sure that the sites can accommodate them. So this is the traditional Croze Community Fourth of July celebration that's put on by the Croze Community Association and others as the nonprofit that's organizing it. And the request is for it to be located on King Family Vineyard, they've outgrown, or growth has happened around the Croze Park, so it can no longer accommodate the fireworks display. So the event they're planning for would be primarily in the evening after the parade and include the community celebration, music, food, beverages, and then culminating in the fireworks. So the property you may all be familiar with is actually adjacent in one spot to the Croze Development Area. King Family Vineyard, being the home of the vineyards and the polo activities located off Half Mile Branch Road. So the site can be accessed from Jarman Gap, Jarman's Gap and two fifty easily from the development area. This site has a, a history of agricultural uses, agriculture being the primary use with the vineyard. There have been multiple special use permits, the property owners, the hosts, the King family are used to going through the special use permit process. They, this is a site that has had larger nonprofit events, if you recall in the past, that there was the Pink Ribbon Polo Match, which was the larger one-time polo event that was approved as a temporary nonprofit event. And then more frequently, and a more recent special use permit was the weekend polo activities, which is up to a thousand. So a site with a history of being able to accommodate larger crowds for those activities, temporary in some cases. It is also a property that's been under conservation easement with the Virginia Outdoors Foundation since two thousand. Just wanted to note that I mentioned that the community had, the previous location at Croze Park is no longer going to work for fireworks. So the celebration was moved in two thousand four to the King Family property, and that was held. But with fewer attendees. So for it to continue at this location and be able to grow into a larger event than this special use permit is necessary. This is an aerial overview of the site where in the red rectangle is where the primary event would setup would be. And when I say that, the food trucks, the music. And then around those areas, parking would take place in some areas that, you know, are typically used for parking now, overflow areas. And then I've shown a couple of locations where traffic control would be set up, but this is an event that has been extensively coordinated with public safety for both events set up onsite and traffic management to and from the site. We'll go, that's really the primary. One of the primary factors in this review. We've reviewed it against the criteria for special use permits. It is in the rural areas. We don't believe it would be as a one-time event on a property that will be continued used for agriculture and is under easement in conflict with the comprehensive plan. The substantial detriment category is really provision is really covered under the supplemental regulations and that extensive review from our public safety agencies. As a one-time event, we don't have any concerns about character and harmony of the area changing. But we did put in your packet and we did want to note that we want to make sure through this process that the roads can handle the traffic. That they've, we've had a chance even before the special use permit is approved to set the parameters of the hours and frequency of the event through the special use permit process, but also have that higher level of review with the, with the public safety agencies. They've met several times and have a, a good, solid preliminary plan in place. A condition of the special use permit approval is that that final plan be approved and then each year it be approved prior to the Fourth of July event. But that does involve VDOT, the police, fire rescue, both the Fire Marshal's Office and local non, excuse, local volunteer organizations like Western Alamo Rescue Squad and then the Croze Volunteer Fire Department. So we really make sure through this process and that that, those adequate arrangements are made. And that covers, as I mentioned, the onsite activities, parking, access for emergency vehicles, maneuverability and access with on the site. Establishing command and control, having crowd managers, things that you see at larger events when you go with those certified crowd manager staff. Along with the Fire Marshal would be onsite as well to implement and inspect for the fireworks permit. So we have recommended approval with these conditions. I'm going to go back a slide and, and note what we did in the staff report as far as we feeling like their, their ability. They demonstrated their ability to meet those, that criteria and the ordinance and have worked to develop that preliminary event plan. You know, it is more traffic than you would expect and would normally want on a to, to have as a sustained increase of traffic, but it will be managed and is for that one-day event. So we have recommended approval with those conditions that specify this is for the Fourth of July ceremony, give them a little flexibility in case of any weather events so that it can be held on or around the Fourth of July and no later than ten thirty P M. And that's, you know, the activities are shutting down. There may be people leaving, you know, cars some, somewhat after that. And then I mentioned the yearly review prior to each year, making sure that they've submitted that zoning clearance with our staff and also making sure that we've got that checks and balances for that safety plan each year. So with that, I will pause for any questions?
Great report. Thank you. Any questions for staff? No, no.
But you're pointing down there.
I was. He doesn't have any questions.
Mine's more of a clarifying question for, I think it was number two, the condition ending at ten thirty. That is, the, the program is ending at ten thirty. It's probably another hour where people are leaving. So it's probably eleven thirty or twelve before the site is clear. Is that, am I thinking about it in the right way?
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Murray?
Ms. Firehawk has a question.
Awesome. Anybody here? Yes. Okay. Commissioner Firehawk?
Yes, this is a question for staff and it's okay if you don't know the answer to this, but I know King Family Vineyard has done a great job with the traffic management for their polo events and all that. So I'm really not concerned about this application with regards to their ability to have a smooth event. My question is about fire safety in regards to situations where, you know, we have high wind and dry conditions. So like right now, Virginia has fire watches in effect. I'm just curious, how, how does that come into play? Is that something that the fire department would communicate to the fireworks event holders to, you know, hey, maybe, because I'm, I'm just thinking about this in a very rural area with a lot of dry forest land around potentially. I know it's a vineyard, but it's surrounded by forests. So just curious kind of how we handle that, that fire risk and those kind of conditions.
Thank you for that question. That is, there is a fireworks permit that's required through the Fire Marshal's Office and you know, for one of the, that being one of the intended purposes, that they need to okay that the fireworks can be launched. They're onsite, they're inspecting if the conditions are such that it's a fire hazard. You know, they're, it's not just a permit and you go off and there's no monitoring and we hope it goes okay. They're onsite, they're authorizing it through their regulations and the fire code.
Okay, so in a sort of high fire risk scenario, they might make the, them delay a few days or something like that. I'm just, because when I think of fire, fireworks and fire departments, I usually think of like they're around for on the ground, sort of around the immediate event and just, I was just curious how much they took. With climate change, we've got a lot more extended dry periods in concern. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner goes on. Commissioner Vivins?
I just, I just have a couple of clarifying pieces. So when we say that this is an, an annual event, but the S P would be for them to be able to have this annual event. So we're not saying it's only for twenty twenty-five. What the commission is looking at right now is for perpetuity for this piece of property, they can have a fireworks event somewhere within a ten, ten-day window of the Fourth of July.
So to answer the first part of that, it is intended to be an annual event and we haven't recommended any conditions that the permit expire or there is a renewal, renewal period for it. This permit is for the event itself. So we're not, vineyard could have fireworks through the fireworks process. That's not, that's a separate activity. But I mean, fireworks are part of the event. We're not specifically regulating the fireworks because they are covered. But it is for the large, the number of attendees and the activities.
It's a gathering.
The gathering.
We're really looking at the, the gathering there. Okay. So then my other, then my other clarifying question is if we're talking about possibilities of the upward, the upward limit being two thousand vehicles. Are we, are we thinking that those individual vehicles will make their way to the vineyard? Or are we thinking that there's going to be staging someplace where a shuttle will carry some segment of those, of those visitors to, to the venue? Or to the polo grounds, is really going to the polo grounds?
It's, it's been reviewed without use of a shuttle and managing it without use of a shuttle and I think that that's something that was mentioned somewhere along the way in terms of something they may, may want to implement. But it's been reviewed with the capacity to handle or the planning in place to handle hard.
To handle two thousand unique cars. Okay, now I'm putting my Commissioner Murray here on. So in, in the narrative from, I guess it's the owner of the property on page five, the individual boast of it being we have a hundred and forty-eight different species of birds. And I wonder when we talk about biodiversity, whether or not there is a that fireworks incompatible with a hundred and forty-eight different species of birds. And the various cows and sheep, which are also in the pastures. And there's some horses pastured out there too. So do we take that? And you can tell me, no, we don't take that into consideration. But then I would say that's sort of odd for somebody to, to sort of lift up the number of species of birds they have on this piece of property when in fact we're going to be blowing off firecrackers that scare the bejesus out of all kinds of entities.
So I think that in their narrative, they wanted to highlight their stewardship and that part of the history of the property in terms of projects and easements and projects they've implemented that have contributed to the rural areas and biodiversity. But I am not the expert to answer any questions as far as it being minimal or, you know, the disruption to what species of birds may be there on the Fourth of July or the Saturday before or after the Fourth of July. But that's, that is part of their narrative that they've mentioned that. Yes, sir.
Thank you so much.
I just had one clarifying question too. So kind of bouncing off of what Commissioner Vivins mentioned, so the the, the special use permit being in perpetuity. But you mentioned that they would need to apply for a zoning clearance every year before the event. Is that right?
Yes, sir. That, that's a staff level review. And it's very common for events that don't even need special use permits. It goes, it's a type of, it's a permit type that we have for Alamo County and allows for us to make sure that all of those approvals are in place, that the, the details that are necessary for the event each year. This has been a this has been a condition for zoning clearances. It's very common with larger, especially larger temporary events.
Thank you. I didn't realize it was every year it was an annual thing. Great. Thank you. I didn't realize it was every year. It was an annual thing. Great. All right. Thank you. Any other questions for staff? No? Okay. Yes, sir.
Just some of these questions made me think of an additional one. So the duration of the fireworks portion of the program, is that governed by the fireworks permit that you apply for and not here?
Yes, we're not intending to govern the duration of the fireworks. We, we have an end time, but I think that that's covered adequately by the other code.
Okay.
All right. With that, thank you, staff. I'll open the public hearing and ask if the applicant would like to say any words or speak or answer questions. And please just state your name and general location of residence and you'll have 10 minutes for presentation if you want it. Sure.
Thank you very much. My name is James King. I'm one of the co-owners at King Family Vineyards in Croze. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight and thank you, Rebecca Ragsdale, for all your work to help us in the application process. My family and I are seeking this special use permit. Not by choice, but just out of service to our community. Mr. Tolson behind me to the left has run this event for the last 10 years at the park and the event's been going on, I believe since 1947. And Mr. Marshall behind me to my right wrote in the Croze Gazette that because of housing encroachment, the event would no longer be able to be at the park and having the land and acreage that we do. I read that and thought, well, how can we be of service? So in jest, I would say that I must wish you would all not approve this because it's a, it's a lot of work and a huge headache and we already take a ton of liability and, and do all that with horses and wine and stuff already. But having watched my dad for many years go through this process for the Pink Ribbon Polo Tournament, and that was a community event to benefit breast cancer research and that money would stay in the area. So I guess, you know, the apple doesn't fall far from the tree and I'm stubborn. And when I see my dad try to help people out, I try to help people out too. So this is just an ask that we host the event that he's run so well for many moons. And I'm happy to answer any questions. The, the hundred, over 100 bird species comment. When I applied for this process, it was, one of the questions was to try to talk about how we were stewards and how we were helping the environment and we worked with Ducks Unlimited and the Army Corps of Engineers to build a waterfall impoundment, which before that was just a dry stream bed. It was just a dry pasture. And since building that impoundment, it's become a bird watching hotspot, which is really cool. There's birders from all over the state and all over the country that come to our place to look at these amazing species of birds that migrate through during the day, during business hours. So I hope that answers that question. Yeah, we're, we're just looking to help out the community and try to, try to host this event one time a year. And we'd be happy to reapply every year through the zoning process, just as like checks and balances. I think everyone we've worked with from, you know, EMS, fire rescue, planning has really helped understand what went well last year and what need, we needed to work on. So I think every year it's just going to get better and better. So we hope, we hope you'll allow us to do it. So we can continue a great tradition. As Mike would, would probably argue and talk about, it's literally the one event that Croze hosts every year where the community gets together. We call it old, old Croze and new Croze. So whether you've lived there a day or, you know, your entire life, it's really the one time every year that people get together to, you know, break bread, have a glass of wine, share a beer, eat a hot dog, whatever. So it's super family friendly, community oriented and we'd love to keep it going. So with that, I'll just kind of open up to any questions. I'm happy to, happy to answer.
Awesome. Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
Yeah. So the, the question was asked about the potential for public transportation to carry some people.
Yeah. We asked, initially we asked gentleman who runs the Croze Trolley, whose name I'm, I'm going to tip on my tongue. Thank you, Mr. Bird. I think he's got three or four trolleys parked in downtown Croze and we asked him just because of his logistical capabilities, could he shuttle people in? Initially he was thumbs up and then when it got down to business, he, he kind of backed out. We would love the opportunity to do that. It's just the, it's the actual asset to do that. The farm has the capability to handle the number of cars we're talking about. But if people either have transportation issues or would prefer public transportation or shuttle, we'd love to help make that happen. We were just trying to use a local asset that was available and they kind of backed out last year. But maybe we'll reapproach this year and ask again and maybe he'd be on board. So.
Thanks.
No problem.
Great. Commissioner Moore, any questions? Any other questions?
Got a couple. Thanks for the, the insights you provided there, Mr. King. I just wanted to confirm that the, the vineyard building is open the entire time. I'm saying if people with disabilities using the restroom, things like that.
Yes, sir. The, the winery facility, the tasting room and what we call the carriage house, the event space next door will be open the entire time. And the plan, their emergency shelters should, anyone need a shelter for, you know, weather, high wind, things like that. But absolutely, we are not required by law, being a farm winery to be ADA compliant. But we decided to do that because we think it's the right thing to do as a family and a business. So our facility will remain open for that specific reason.
Yeah, absolutely. And then the second question is probably more of a comment, but just around fireworks and just respecting that not everybody loves them. I think of veterans who have served in combat, right? And so right, so that the 10:30 timeframe, just be respected for that. Maybe it's less or I don't know, but just.
Yes, sir. The, to your comment earlier, the fireworks, I guess duration is primarily budgetary restriction. I think they're usually around a thousand dollars for every minute of fireworks. So the budget that the CC has bring to the table every year is about 15 minutes worth of fireworks every year. And so given the nautical sunset time, I believe generally speaking in that 10 day window, fireworks would start just after 10 o'clock, around 10:04 and maybe, sorry, 9:30. Thank you. Had to run for about 15 minutes. And then be done. So the last hour you mentioned would be cars exiting. But yes, I'm very, very well aware of all the people that don't appreciate fireworks.
And thank you for your service.
No, no problem. So we would just look to educate and communicate to the community when they're going to happen. So people need to put on ear protection, shut and lock their doors, keep their dogs inside. They'll have the ability to do that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any questions?
Good question. So in the summers, when you have your polo going on, how many cars do you typically see on a particular Sunday?
A typical Sunday for cars, I don't personally count cars. I could ask Brandon Black with Lenora Parking who actually does. Our parking lot can get full around the tasting room. There is tailgating around the, the field. We do have what we call an overflow lot right next door. It's kind of in my front yard. But we've never been at capacity for pull-up in terms of going over the limit of, I think, a thousand vehicles or something like that. So we've never been close. The, the two biggest days of the year are Memorial Day and Labor Day. For obvious reasons, people are traveling. But I, I could get back to you with an answer if I talked to Mr. Black.
Just if you, just off the top of your head, more or less, I mean, your parking lot said, your main lot's probably.
Our main lot has 200 cars in the main lot around the tasting room just for tasting room traffic, not on a polo Sunday.
Yeah. And then you have all the tailgating all around.
Correct. So I guess to throw a number out, maybe 400 cars.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Just, just thank you. And thank you for clarifying on the, on the, on the, your work with Ducks Unlimited. That's a, that's a good organization. So just a piece of clarification. So you have the, you have your exercise rink that's down, that's below the polo rink.
Outdoor polo arena. Yes, sir.
There's the big arena. And then there's the one that's behind the gray fencing.
Yeah, the gray fence, the gray fencing is an outdoor polo arena.
That's a.
The upper field is a, it's a grass field.
Yeah, it's, it's smaller size. Okay. So that's.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The reason for that construction was basically if the grass field is wet, it is not safe for the ponies or the players
Right.
to play. So if it's not saturated, we can play in the arena because the footing is different. It's a rock dust sand mick.
It is. It should be.
Safer.
Right.
We also do polo lessons for children and adults.
In the arena?
In the arena, correct, because it's confined and it's.
But you're not parking on the arena. So you've got a certain kind of drainage thing.
Absolutely not.
That's what I want. That's all I want is that the arena's off, the arena's off, off limits. Okay.
Yes, sir.
I just had a quick question. First of all, thanks, everybody for what you do for the community in all aspects. So can you just speak briefly? I know that there was a mention of Half Mile Branch Road being sufficient to handle the cars. Can you just briefly speak about what your vision is for event management for this event?
For traffic specifically?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Last year, the, the exit plan was initially to have cars exit two different entrance, two different exits. One would turn right and go south down Half Mile Branch Road towards 250 and 64. The other would exit left out of the main entrance and go towards Jarman's Gap in Croze proper.
Yeah.
At the last minute, that did not happen. Mr. Black from Lenora Parking and one of the police officers on site made the decision to keep cars away from 250. So all cars exited to the left, which was not conducive to efficiency.
Yeah.
To say the least. So talking to all parties involved, the plan this coming year is to have officers stationed at various intersections. There'll be two officers at the intersection of Jarman's Gap and Half Mile Branch Road and Layntown Road. They will be illuminated with the light as is requirement. There will also be two officers in 250 where Hillsborough exits on the 250, they will also be illuminated. We've talked to Mr. Rhodes, Officer Rhodes about that. We've talked with VDOT as well. There is also going to be officers, three different officers on Greenwood Road and Jarman's Gap Road to limit traffic heading towards the two officers at the intersection of Jarman's Gap and Layntown. Let's keep them safe and keep traffic down.
Yeah.
So based on last year's experience and the recommendations from Officer Rhodes, Mr. Black and VDOT, we've kind of come up with a plan that we believe will be much more efficient, much safer, get everyone out faster in an efficient and safe way. So hoping that's the case. And again, you know, everyone's got a plan that goes out the window after the first bullet flies, as we said in the Marine Corps. So basically I'm hoping that as we move along and move forward, the plan will get better and better each year. Fingers crossed.
Great. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Really helpful.
Yes.
Just want to make sure, Commissioner Firehawk, any questions? I don't see your hand raised, so I'm assuming not.
Uh, no, no, Chair, I don't. I'm just.
Um, thank you. Well, yes, sir.
Say something.
You may. I, we, our clock is off, so.
That's all right.
It's okay.
I'm, I'm Mike Marshall and the publisher and editor of the Croze Gazette, and I'm here representing the Croze Board of Trade, which is the nonprofit that does the fundraising for the show. And I just want to make it clear, we're all volunteers. We do not charge for this event. This year it's going to cost us about $50,000 to put on. And this, I'm a little worried you guys will raise our requirements and, and raise our cost. But Tim and I have put this on now for 15 years, volunteers. Everybody is a volunteer. We're doing it so that we can create an attraction that will cause newcomers to town to come in and get invested into town and start to call it their own hometown. And I just want to say, it's been going on for a long time with volunteer effort exclusively, no charge. We want everybody to come. You don't have to pony up anything to get in. I just want that to be clear.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Thanks, everyone. You can have a seat and we'll open it up to the audience. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to speak to this issue? All right. Not seeing any. Is there anyone online?
No, sir.
I don't think anyone signed up, right?
Correct. Nobody signed up.
Okay. Great. All right. Well, with that, I assume the applicant doesn't want to come back up and speak to any of those issues. So we're good to go. All right. With that, I'll close the public hearing and open it up for discussion. Would anybody like to discuss any concerns, questions?
You know, Chair, I just need to sort of say that I, I'm glad they found the place to land because this in fact is, is one of those, and it was one of those community building things that we talk about. But I also want to make it clear that the county has responsibilities for its community. And so I thank the King family for assuming a great deal of expense because this is not an expensive expense for your property and for your family. So thank you for that. But for the volunteers, the volunteers need to appreciate that if there are regulations that have to be, have to be adhered to, it's not to give them a pain in the pocketbook. It's to give, make sure that the community is safe while this big event is taking place. 2,000 people. 2,000 people would fill easily the lawn. I just think about that. So that's the kind of people that you're trying to move around there. And so I believe that the King family and the King, and the King Organization knows how to do this well. But I want to just make it clear to the community, this is not about putting any burden on a bunch of volunteers. It's about making sure that next year it happens and the year after that, and the year after that.
Thank you. Well said. Any other questions, comments, or would you like to make a motion?
And, and before making a motion, could I just add a suggested phrase to this? And that is that move to recommend approval, if, if the motion is for approval, recommend approval with the conditions and for the reasons stated in the staff report. I'd like to add the recommended conditions to the motion if the commission is inclined to recommend approval.
No further discussion except just to commend the King family for offering this service to the community. I moved to recommend approval of, oh, they lost the screen there. Okay, there you go. I moved to recommend approval of SP 2024 00001 with the conditions and for the reasons stated in the staff report.
Great. Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Okay. Can we have a roll, please?
All right. Mr. Bivens?
Aye.
Mr. Carazana?
Aye.
Mr. Missile?
Aye.
Mr. Claiborne?
Aye.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Firehawk?
Aye.
Awesome. Thank you, Ms. Ragsdale. All right. We will move on to the second public hearing item, SP 2024 dash 22 Living Earth School. I'll ask for the staff report.
Good evening. Apologies for the delay. I'm Scott Clark from the Community Development Department. This is a presentation about a proposed special use permit for a camp use. This is a site located off of Red Hill Road adjacent to Walnut Creek Park. Request is for a camp for a maximum of 250 attendees for various year-round activities plus some events up to six times per year for a maximum of 500 attendees. And again, the proposed development includes camp facilities, staff residences, camping areas and a pavilion. The parcels outlined in red are the property for the proposal. You can see at the north end of the map is where it touches Red Hill Road. That would be where the entrance would be on the western boundary. That green area is Walnut Creek Park, which is directly adjacent. Just want to point out that for the remainder of the presentation, all the maps you see, the north, north will be at the right rather than at the top, just to fit the plan on the screen. Well, so in summary, this use would consist of eight weeks per year of summer camp with up to 250 campers. The remaining 44 weeks of the year, there would be other day and overnight camp activities for. The remaining forty-four weeks of the year, there would be other day and overnight camp activities for up to a hundred campers. These are all, generally speaking, uh, environmental education and nature-related camps. In addition to the main camp activities, there would be up to twelve programs per year of, for two hundred or fewer attendees. And then up to six events, um, for fundraisers and related events, uh, from two hundred and one to five hundred attendees. I'll show you the plan in a moment, but just in summary, the structures on the site would include a welcome pavilion, a main camp hall, some cabins, up to six staff residences to provide, uh, places for staff who are there, especially for the summer camps, other miscellaneous structures such as a nature library, a pavilion at the southern end of the property near the South Fork Hardware Floodplain and some greenhouses. There will also be a central water and septic system proposed for the use. Uh, that proposal has been submitted and is currently under review, and that would be a decision to be made by the board of supervisors. This is the applicant's conceptual plan. Again, north is at the right. You can see the entrance on Red Hill Road. Here, there's one staff residence area at the front using an area that was previously used for a residence in the past, although there's nothing there now. Farther back in the property to the south, just before you get to White Oak Creek, there's a welcome area which has a pavilion, a parking area, and a maintenance building. Once you get over White Oak Creek and up the hill, you're into the main camp area. And that's where the camp hall, the cabins, uh, structures like that would be. And then at the far south end, above the floodplain of the South Fork Hardware, and this is downstream of the dam at Walnut Creek Park, there's just a pavilion there for educational activities. The two areas hatched in red are where the staff residences would be located. The blue areas are the primitive tent camping areas. Not necessarily all of those would be in use at any one time. It'd be rotated between those areas to provide locations for camping in tents in the woods. Another sheet in the conceptual plan that lays out the vegetation management for the camp. There's four zones here. Zone one, in the lightest green, is the most intensive area. It's about ten acres. Zones two and three, where there is, uh, well, two is more wooded but allows for structures such as the educational buildings and the staff residences. More vegetated, uh, but with keeping as many trees as possible. Zone three, which is basically the primitive tent camping areas, is where uh, the forest canopy would be retained, but there would be permitted uses on the ground for the tents, perhaps some tent platforms. And then the remaining two hundred and three acres is in zone four, which is an area that would not be impacted for structures in use. It would retain, it would remain forested. Under the factors for review for especially for it, under no substantial detriment, there are two places where the application plan makes, uh, has some mitigation measures for impacts on adjacent properties. At the left here, you'll see a, an inset showing the welcome area that I mentioned before, near White Oak Creek. That includes the welcome pavilion, which is the larger structure, a parking area for drop-off and pickup, and a maintenance building. There's also a greenhouse and some orchard trees proposed for that. That maintenance building is the closest point to a dwelling from this welcome area. It's just under five hundred feet away. It's also worth noting, it's about forty feet lower than the dwelling, so there's not a direct line of sight. Um, the applicants have moved the driveway that's shown here. The old existing farm road goes very close to this property line and is not at all screened from this dwelling here. So by moving this, uh, proposed driveway farther into the property, they've increased the setback in the screening as the majority of that area is wooded in between. Also, uh, in this inset on the right, this is up near the entrance at the north end of the property. You can see that this hatched area again is where one of the staff dwellings would be. And there's some screen, screening shown here, um, to protect the, or the adjacent property at the bottom here from the impacts of that driveway being used. This isn't the dwelling here that you see at the bottom. That's the garage. The, the house is a little bit farther away, but so this would provide some screening between those two properties. Under the criterion for character of the neighborhood area, you can see, uh, with the property outlines and the conceptual plan overlaid on the aerial photos, generally speaking, the area is made up of large forested parcels with some significant open areas, especially to the north and the east. And of course, there's the public park to the west that matches that same pattern, being somewhat more wooded but with some open areas. Um, the park, or, excuse me, the camp layout largely matches that pattern for the surrounding area. Address some safety issues. Um, the property would be accessed by a Red Hill Road, which is a good condition road, about twenty-four feet wide, um, the center line well paved. VDOT had no objections to the proposed use. The applicants have requested a critical slopes waiver to, uh, be able to pull that back this bank that you see here. We're looking southeast along Red Hill Road. This area here, they're asking for a waiver to, um, disturb about twenty-six hundred square feet or point oh six of an acre, uh, to just open up that sightline from the entrance. Also related to road safety, staff has proposed a condition that the larger six events would be required to use shuttle vehicles rather than individual vehicles to just reduce the overall traffic load on Red Hill Road. Their emergency access, the fire rescue division or department, uh, did review this application. They were concerned, especially with the length of the property and the distance to the activity areas, that there be a clear route all the way into the property to allow for access for emergency vehicles. So they asked for a twenty-foot improved road surface to provide for two, two-way traffics that people could be getting in and out at the same time. That's now shown on the plan. Uh, they also asked for an emergency access plan before the use begins, and that is one of the recommended conditions. As I understand it, that's also required for the applicant's insurance, so that's certainly going to happen before any, uh, use begins. Under consistency with the comprehensive plan, there are several criteria that this use uh, is in compliance with, related to public awareness of biodiversity and nature, the retention of important land cover, especially near rivers and streams, protecting, uh, historic and archaeological resources. Uh, there are some stone structure remnants, foundations and walls on the site. And also, again, providing information to the public to understand the aspects of the rural area. However, this, of course, is a form of development, uh, in the rural areas, which is generally not in, in compliance with the comp plan. What we usually do in a case like this is compare the impacts of a proposed use to what is possible under byright residential development. This particular property could have up to twenty-three dwellings. There wouldn't be limits on structure size or road or driveway lengths, and there would be limited control of vegetation changes on the property if it was developed for a residential use. In contrast, the camp use has a specific and limited extent of development and has defined vegetation management areas that protect most of the forest cover on the site. To compare traffic impacts between residential use and the camp use, I want to refer to this table here. And again, there are eight weeks a year where up to two hundred and fifty campers could be on site for summer camp. These two rows in the middle of the table are kind of worst-case scenarios for traffic generation. One, assuming that every single one of those campers is staying overnight for the whole week. So all of them arrive on a Sunday evening and all of them depart on a Friday. And that creates peaks at those times that are somewhat larger than the peak generation for residential development. The row below that makes the assumption that all two hundred and fifty campers, if they max out attendance, uh, are attending day by day. So they're arriving and departing Monday to Friday. And again, you get a somewhat higher peak for those daily trips than you would for residential development. That's a, these are worst-case scenarios. It's, in the applicant's experience, rare for any given summer camp to be entirely overnight campers or entirely day campers. And what that means is these peaks get spread somewhat more. Um, rather than having a big peak on Sunday and Friday or having big peaks every weekday, it's more averaged out. And again, that's eight weeks out of the year. The other forty-four weeks are the day camps, which are limited to a hundred people. So again, that's going to be lower weekday trip levels than you would expect from the twenty-three dwellings on the site. So in summary, we found two major fact, positive factors. Uh, the fact that the use limits development impacts compared to what's possible under byright development and the fact that environmental education is consistent with several comprehensive plan goals. We're recommending approval with conditions listed in the staff report. However, I have two changes to those conditions I want to review with you. These were the original conditions. Won't read them all. There are two changes recommended here. The first is in number three. This was taken from some draft conditions from the applicant's previous application when it was located on Pounding Branch Road near Batesville. For those of you familiar with it, it's an entirely different road from, from Red Hill. It's about a ten to eleven foot wide dirt road, uh, that required a different level of traffic mitigation. So, uh, I should not have included sections A and B here, and we're recommending that those be removed. Also, after discussions with the applicants, we are recommending that condition eight be deleted. Um, this is a condition requiring Health Department approval before the zoning clearance can be offered to, or approved to begin the use. This is already covered by existing sections of the zoning ordinance. This requirement already exists that any such structures would have to have Health Department approval. There's a concern that including this condition would raise the expectation that all of the systems for all of the buildings would have to be built and approved before any use could begin. And that's not necessarily what was attended. Uh, so we're recommending that number eight also be deleted. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. That was a, a great presentation, really helpful. Uh, Commissioner, any questions for staff? Start with Commissioner Moore.
Uh, not for Steph, I don't think.
Okay. Commissioner Murray?
Yes. Has there been a, um, site survey of the streams on this, on this property? Just, you know, quick glancing at the DCR map of streams versus the county map of streams, there do seem to be some discrepancies in terms of where the intermittent streams are. Has anyone, um, site verified where streams are? I see some pretty, some topography, um, on those maps that suggest that there may be streams that are not, that are not on the, um, mark, on, on the map.
I'm not aware of any detailed onsite surveys looking for intermittent streams. It's possible the applicants may have more information, as I know they've done a lot of detailed investigations on the property. But I'm not aware of any county or otherwise official surveys relating to stream locations.
Mr. Clayburn?
No questions for that.
Mr. Carazana?
So a quick question on the requirement for the roads, the twenty-foot for fire accident, fire accidents, I'm assuming. So, so that will be required the entire length of the road? And then will there be hammerheads or some way to, to turn, to turn around, uh? Is it?
We've had some discussions about that. Um, that would be resolved at the site plan stage, once the exact layout is known. Uh, Fire Marshal's Office mentioned that some sort of hammerhead or turnaround might be needed. But again, that's once we have a more tied-down location for all the structures when the site plan comes through, that'll be worked out. Fire Rescue will review that plan as well.
Okay. But that will be required, obviously, some. Thank you.
Commissioner Bivins, any questions?
Thank you, Chair. I just, I have a, uh, you know, today's a day of clarification. So in Scott, in your presentation, do day camps equal those students who come there on homeschooling? Is it the applicant in there, in the applicant's narrative says that they have homeschooling there, homeschooling, homeschoolers there every day? And I'm wondering if that's synonymous to what your terminology is a day camp?
That's part of the day camp use. They may also have, um, adult groups doing environmental education. So it's not entirely made of homeschool groups, but that's one of the major pieces that day camp use for the forty-four weeks.
So then, given that, if I could ask you to go back to, was one of your first one or two slides where you had the number of of activities taking place there and ask, here we go. I would just ask the applicant to unpack that. Because when I, so you're saying the, the, the weekly camps, not the, I'm signing up for summer camp or I'm coming for a special event? That's the other camps or the other activities on the piece of property? And that's forty-four weeks per year and up to a hundred campers per day or a hundred campers per week?
That's, that's a set maximum. That's not, they, I don't think they expect to have a hundred campers every single day. That's just a cap for potential activities. That's the actual number of events per week. And hours per day is going to depend on the group they're hosting.
Okay. Chair, if I could just ask the, the applicant to expand that because that's a different, from their narrative and this narrative, this feels like a lot more people coming out there.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Awesome. Just, I just have one clarification. So we're making a motion on the special use permit, but not on the special exception, right?
Uh, that's correct. Thank you. Um, yeah, the special exception for the, uh, critical slopes waiver. If you all want to provide any feedback to the board, we'll certainly carry that forward to them, but you're not allowed to make a motion on that.
Great. Thank you. All right. With that, I'll ask the applicant to come up and open the public hearing.
Uh, good evening, Chair Missile, uh, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Kelsey Schlein. I'm a planner with SHIMP Engineering. Um, we're assisting Living Earth Sanctuary with their special use permit application. Just going to pull up our slides here. Scott, thank you so much for the staff report and your presentation. Um, I am quickly going to turn it over to Hub Not, who is one of the founders and executive director of, um, Living Earth School. He's going to provide an overview of, um, the type of programming that they offer and, um, what they, uh, what this property can afford them.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Um, one, I would just thank the Planning Commission for all the questions you do ask and try to sort out what's going to be a good thing for the community. And Scott Clark, who's put up with me for a bunch of years, coming back and forth and doing this. So, um, I appreciate it a lot. And for, I'm also really grateful for the families, is this echoing? For the families for twenty-three years and the kids that have had the luxury of being in camp and seeing the kids come back with so excited to tell me stories about something they saw out in the woods and I ask questions and they gets, they're just, there's a spark in their eyes. That's really unique today for a world that's really plugged in. And to see these kids come alive. And I do adult programs. We can answer the question you were asking about unpacking the forty-four weeks. But I do adult programs and I see child likeness. I work with eighty-year-olds sometimes and fifty-year-olds and thirty-year-olds, and they all come back feeling like children again. And, uh, there's a youthfulness that comes to them. So I stand here today, not for me, but mostly just to keep providing something like we do in the community for this. And I have walked this two hundred and eighty-seven acres at great length. Day in, day out, I go out there in the snow. I have maps. I have species lists. There's like thirty-six species of trees. The White Oak Creek has some really sweet fish in it, and I just really care about the land. And I'm, some, how the animals move on it. I've seen bobcats and other animals and how they, the routes they use is impacting how we plan to use the site, so we can not disturb what's happening there and what's good there. There's a lot of unique ecology. There's plants that are unique to this site that we have designed to work away from or, and there's also historic sites to learn from. A neighbor showed me a Native American grinding stone along the river in, embedded. So it's a really rich site and it's an awesome place to educate people. We've been patching together properties for twenty-three years, trying to do these programs. And we build a really robust program to work, take people out into the woods and teach them of all ages and educate them and help them become nature smart and how to interact well. So like when we see a copperhead, how do you interact with a copperhead? Do you just scream and yell? Or do you, you know, or how do you handle it? What do you do? What do you do when you see a bear? You know, and teaching these kids how to do that brings a deep ease in their soul. And they get a lot of beauty that comes out of the woods and something that changes in them. So that's why I'm here today is to create a place that will go beyond me, you know, for the next hundred years. And that's what we're working towards. And this land, I've looked at a lot of properties in this land and the people that helped buy it for us are conservationists. They have several thousand acres in easement. Our goal is to protect this land the best we can for the long term. Um, and protect the resources, but also use those resources to educate the next generation of people so that they can be inspired by it. And I see that a lot of the kids that we've worked with have come through. And they said it's impacted their career choices and that they feel a sense of belonging. And our main tenants are earth care, people care. And those are the things we rover on what we teach. And, um, so we're excited for it and I'm excited to share this land with people. And just to make a place that Charlottesville can be proud of, that can keep educating people and of all different ages. I've been working with a group of elders lately and it's great to work through the generations from the little kids and to the older people and just provide a place that feels like home to them and a place that they feel part of, where they can help be a part of the caring for the land. And then they feel a commitment to it. So that's why I'm here. Um, and I wish you could be there when the kids do come back to camp and just see how alive they are. Cause they come sometimes somewhat dead inside from being on their screens all day. But then eventually when they come to us to watch the work that happens is beautiful and needed. And I get thanked a lot in town, even though it's not me doing it. I have wonderful staff, um, throughout the year and that they're doing a lot of the work. But parents are just really grateful for what we provide to the community and I want to keep it going. And we can't keep patching sites together because it's just exhausting and kids need a home. So I'm going to turn it back to Kelsey.
Thank you.
Thanks, Hub. Um, yeah, I think that this, this property is really special and really unique. Um, and it's also really suitable to support this type of use, um, not only from the ecological perspective, but also from the, the transportation's perspective, the access perspective. Um, and this large middle area of this two hundred and eighty-seven acres, where we can really concentrate the uses and, and the most intense programming on the site to have the least impact possible, um, on neighbors. So we, I think this property is, is very special from many aspects. Um, and then, but especially from an impacts and, and planning and evaluations standpoint. And, um, sometimes through the lens that, that you all are tasked to look at these things through. This, this property really checks, checks a lot of boxes. Um, uh, and so these are just a few of, of the site photos. Um, so on, on the left, uh, most photo, we're looking at, um, a meadow as you come into the property near the welcome area. The middle property is the hardware river at the rear of the property. And on the right, um, is some of the historic stone walls that Scott mentioned in his staff report. Um, that are in, in some of the areas of, of the property that are proposed, um, to, to have minimal amount of, of human impact in, in the future. Um, and so here are just a few more photos. The, the middle and the right photo, we're looking at the central meadow area where, uh, most of the programming for the main camp area and proposed structures will be on the property. Um, and just kind of hopping into the site plan a little more, uh, and going through how we laid this out. Uh, it's the, the site, we're really fortunate that the, a high point on the site and the open meadow is, is really central. Um, and it's, it's, uh, adequate to support the proposed, uh, structures while in septic systems that are, that are necessary to support kind of full build out of this camp. Um, and we've programmed this to have the, the greatest impact at the core of the site and the least impact kind of around the periphery adjacent to neighbors. So that's how we've cited our primitive camp areas. But, um, you know, despite the proposed improvements on the site, we're still no closer than five hundred feet from any, from the nearest residence anywhere. Um, and this is just kind of going through, uh, the, the, the welcome center as, as you come to the site. Uh, the craft and maintenance barn garden center that's imagined for that area. Once you cross White Oak Creek, um, and get up into the open central meadow, this is where most of the buildings are proposed on the property. Um, and then we have a staff residence area, primitive camp area, and, uh, some additional primitive camp areas. Um, just uh, getting my directions mixed up since we rotated this, but I think that's east of, of the main camp area. Uh, pavilion towards the rear of the property, um, to provide access and shade, um, when kids are enjoying access to the hardware river. Um, our concept plan here, uh, we've, we've defined specific areas and programmed how the site can be used. Um, and this ties directly to our vegetative management plan. I'll also note that, um, Hub and his team have been working very closely with the Department of Forestry on a stewardship plan. Uh, this is kind of the, the, uh, most comprehensive, uh, forest management plan that the Department of Forestry prepares. Um, and so he's been working very closely with them, uh, to, to come up with a comprehensive plan for just, uh, long-term management of, of the forest systems on this property. Um, and you can see here that, uh, we, and we've included some much more detailed information in our, in our concept plan and materials about exactly what's permitted in these site, in these sites. But eighty-three percent of the site is, is, is effectively, uh, going to, to remain as is with minimal primitive trails going through it. Um, and, uh, keeping the septic systems, all of that stuff, uh, out of those portions of the site. Um, keeping it on the high portions of the site, the most suitable soils to support, um, those, those types of improvements. Um, and just kind of going over some distances to nearby residences. Again, our closest structure is approximately five hundred feet away. Um, the main camp area is nearly two thousand feet away from the, uh, from the nearest residence. Um, and our proposed staff residence areas, uh, you know, fifteen hundred to twenty-three hundred square feet. So this site really lends itself very well to, to have as minimal impact as possible on, on adjacent property owners. Um, and as kind of reiterating a few points that Scott said, the, the property could be developed with twenty-three single-family dwelling units. And so looking at impacts, we think that this has, this site, uh, this proposed use has far, um, less impacts in a lot of respect uh, than the byright use. And it also, I think, is a, is a, is a great community asset and opens up the property for people to be able to enjoy, um, nature rather than kind of keeping this very privatized as single-family residential. Um, that, uh, had a few, if I could just touch on this one point very quickly. For the revised conditions, um, uh, Scott has already gone over, uh, two items and just a quick note that we had included. Um, for the shuttling for the, um, larger events, for the community and fundraiser events. We, uh, just request that the shuttling kind of come into effect after two hundred people. So that up to two hundred, uh, could access the site in individual vehicles. And then also requesting for amplified sound in the welcome area, but are totally willing to commit to a restricted set of hours with that as well. Thank you all so much for your consideration. We're available for any questions you may have.
Great, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? I don't know if your question was answered.
My question was not answered, Chair.
Would you like to ask it again?
I will, I will ask, I will ask the applicant who always has good responses. Well, I don't know about you.
Yeah, yeah.
But the one next to you always has good, always has good, always answers my questions appropriately. Um, if we could go back, there was a piece there, we're trying to figure out the number of people, not the camps.
Yeah.
Not the special events, but in your narrative, or someone's narrative.
Yeah.
There was conversation that that space is used for homeschool children.
Yeah.
And how many of those a day?
Yeah.
To have some sense of what, what really will be flowing down that onto the property. Oh, thank you. Thank you very much.
You ready?
Please go, please go.
Um, so right now we do homeschool programs, um, in the Charlottesville, two days a week. And it's like thirty-six kids max. So, um, it's only two days a week, but once in a while we get other groups that reach out and say, hey, can we bring twenty kids out to you to do a program? So we were trying to like, how do we set this up and not have it like, said Tuesdays and Wednesdays you can do stuff, but Thursdays and Fridays you can't? Like, how do we just kind of do it? Right now, we don't, we, we do other homeschool programs in Goochlin and Stanton. So, so there's that. And then I also, we do a lot of adult programs and there's demand for adult programs during the week. And we haven't been able to do them because we haven't really had adequate site. So having some adult programs where they come out and like our elder program is something we're trying to develop more. How, so how do we have just some spaciousness? Most week, I'm, there's, I doubt, I can't ever imagine we'll have a hundred people five days a week.
You know, you can.
I don't imagine it, you know, I, I mean, it's like, we, there're probably four or five days a week where we don't do anything. So, so, yeah.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant?
Um, yes, as I said, have you done a site survey of this, the streams on the property?
There, there hasn't been a comprehensive site survey of the streams done, um, just yet. But Hub, um, is, is, has walked the property many times, um, and I'm sure can speak to that a little more.
So, I mean, there's no, not, nothing official. I know the hardware river has had a bunch of studies done on it. I've done my own surveys, probably doesn't carry a lot of weight in here right now, but I do know a lot of the fish species that are in the creeks and which ones indicate healthy streams or which ones don't.
Oh, just let me, let me clarify.
Yeah.
I could tell you all about the hardware. But anyways, so the, um, we require a hundred-foot buffer on perennial and intermittent streams.
Yeah.
So just my, my concern would be is there have been other situations in the Alamo County's rural area where there are undocumented streams on the Alamo County's map. It's pretty frequent.
Yeah.
Um, in the rural area. And this is an area just comparing the county map and
Yeah.
DCR's map, there are discrepancies where those streams are. So
Yeah.
Is, is anyone going to site verify that the actual presence of streams before like development comes in place of?
I mean, I ma, I imagine like according to the site plan, it's probably part of the process. But I know where all the, I mean, I could draw them, any, all the streams on the map right now that are perennial flowing. And summertime, like last summer was a dry season. So, but there's a lot of the creek, I, I know, I know that you mentioned all these underlations in there. A lot of those are dry this time of year, so.
If you look above, this isn't a good map. You had one map that had one, there's one
Where's that green?
Had some topography on it.
Um, yeah.
As you can see, okay, so if you look right above zone one, you'll see that very steep, um, V shape, um, right above zone one.
Yeah.
Um, that, that looks like that they're very easily could be a stream right there. And then down below it as well, you have very steep V shape.
That, that, it, it is steep, but it is dry. And it has always, it seems like it's always been dry. So, and even there's not, like, I know there's rushes and sedges that indicate wet zones and there's none in that zone that I know. So, um, and even when it rained a lot this, um, during the hurricane, because the river did come up sixteen feet. You know, but during the, um, during the hurricanes, that, that creek still didn't flow, that, that area, that drainage.
And then just as FYI, I mean, it looks like your property is, this is completely vegetated already, but you probably already know there is a TMDL for the, the hardware river. It's has a, it's has a bacterial TMDL for being contaminated, so.
Yeah.
Just.
Yeah, from what I've researched, because I've read a bunch of reports on it, that's mostly the North Fork and that this section that we're on is supposedly considered the, the, the healthy section of the whole hardware and the rest is considered impaired. Cause it's been a concern of mine, like, cause I have kids I work with and I'm responsible for it. Number one, I mean, we're here to have fun and teach them about nature, but my number one thing is to have a hundred percent return rate to their parents. So, um, having, um, and so far we've been great with that. So, um, but, um, so, and that, so I looked at that because I was concerned like, I don't want to put kids in river. You can't keep kids out of water sometimes. So, you know, so I just, yeah, I've looked into that, so.
If you could include in one of your activities, stream monitoring.
You what?
Maybe you could include in one of your activities, stream monitoring.
We have been talking with UVA about bringing some of their, um, PhD students out to do bio blitzes with like the muscle research and stream monitoring and like what's the health of this? And our hope is early on to start, I've started making lists like what data points would be really healthy to have, that we can monitor it over time. One, not just to see our impact, but also to get the kids involved about, learning about stream health and how do we improve that? Cause it's critical in our area and we've got a lot of impaired streams. And I've walked, we have about a mile of the hardware on this property and I've walked the whole length of it and there's almost no trash in it. I found one tire. I'll give it to you if you want, but, but I'm just kidding. But, you know, there, it's really a clean, I'm surprised because I've rarely walked this much property and there's not like trash heaps all over the place. So I feel very blessed in that way. There are some evasives that we planted with, that's in the forestry management plan.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Uh, sort of a curiosity, I was checking out the GIS web, um, data on this, on these parcels. And I see that it's already in the, the use value taxation program. Do you know if you'll continue that or, or, uh, as a nonprofit school, do you get property tax exemption? I'm curious how that'll unfold.
I, I don't know if we get, well, we're a nonprofit school, but it's owned currently. It's under an LLC, which we hope to buy it out from the person who bought it for us. She bought it for us to have, give us time because she knows, she really believes in what we do. And she just is like, let's just buy this and help you out. And, um, our hope is to put it under easement. And PEC's walked it with me at length. Nature Conservancy is also very interested in supporting it. So, um, so it is my hope to preserve it and put it in easement and continue the land use it's currently in. So. And the V, um, Virginia Department of Forestry, after he walked it with me, he says, this is a really healthy patch of forest for the most part. Not that there's not problem areas, but he was amazed at how, it's kind of like been a forgotten, owned by a family since the fifties and they don't live in the state. So I've been really lucky on that front.
Great. So, any other questions? Yeah, good, I'm going, good. All right, Commissioner Firehawk, after you.
Uh, thank you. Um, just, I just asked, I have three questions you can, I'll just give them to you all at once. Um, first of all, I just thank you for this wonderful use of the land. I think it's very compatible next to our county park. Um, I want, I had, uh, one of our constituents ask me a question about the number of people that would be living in the houses. You talked about the number of houses, the number of counselors. Uh, but there's a, a request to understand kind of how many people will be living full-time on the site. And then the next question is, are you going to do events that are fundraisers, but are not related to your core mission? So an example of that would be like a wedding, you know, wedding events. You can raise money with weddings, but they're not really usually having to do with nature study. And then the third question, Kelsey's still keeping up here, uh, Kelsey, is, um, the new road location, and I understand you want to move it away from the neighbor. And my, but, you know, and I visited in the snow with Hub, so it's kind of hard to see things. But, um, I was just curious if you had surveyed and engineered that location. It looked like, you know, the lower land down maybe what was kind of rocky. And I was just sort of curious if you were sure about the suitability. Uh, the soils, the stability, that, you know, whether you'd have to do any blasting, whether that new road location was really feasible or how important was it at this, at this, um, timing for this application? Where you are in the process. So if you can hit all three of those, I'll be satisfied. Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Um, thank you, Ms. Firehawk. Um, for the road, real quick, I'll work backwards. But, um, the road, I did walk that new site with a road builder that's been in. So he's not technically an engineer, but he's built a lot of roads in the North Garden area on rural farms. And he, the area that we looked at was different than the rocky zone that you saw. So it was down through, that's somewhat already clear. Um, it's like a meadow, but it's got a lot of evasives in it. So we'd be removing the evasives. And he said the slope of it and the pitch of it is, he said, be really easy to put a road in there that's adequate for, and he knows the twenty-foot buff, the width that we need. So I don't know if that answers your questions. Obviously, I think with the site plan, there's a lot to be done between now and then of will that work or not. Um, for the staff housing, um, maybe just a hundred staff in each house or some, no. Um, um, I mean, they're going to be just like, their, their setup is like single-family homes. So there's like some long-term staff that work with us that housing is a big issue in this area, especially for housing. And we're a nature program, we're very successful, but we're also not like a tech company that makes a lot of money. So, um, providing housing is a real bonus for us to get, keep, keep quality staff around. So those staff residences would be set up just for like a single family or like one staff per bedroom or, you know. So we're not looking at like major like bunk houses or let a college party type house be there. And then during the summer, to answer your question for the overnight camps, there's often like a dozen or so staff that stay on site. Late, often like when we use the Girl Scout camp, they would stay in these like canvas tents. You know, that they would stay in for a couple of weeks for the summer and then go home, like a lot of camps do, kind of like cap, camp cabins. And that's that setup, but we're not looking to house like thirty people a year round in that sense. I don't know if that answers your questions enough.
I think it's probably the best answer you can do for right now. Um, I still do want to hear about like whether you would be doing unrelated events like weddings.
Sure. Um, yeah, so, so for the events, uh, up to two hundred people, we described that those could, in our application, that those could be, um, made available to, to outside parties. So corporate groups, weddings, um, and those are limited to twelve per year for the larger events. We describe those as community and fundraiser events. Um, and so, yeah, I, I think it's, it's something we've, we've talked about a lot and it just is an additional revenue stream that will really help them out. And so we're trying to find that balance between a scale. revenue stream that will really help them out. And so we're trying to find that balance between a scale that's uh minimal impact. Um, but it also enables the, the, the school to bring in some rental income.
Could you, could you say that again more slowly, Kelsey, about the number of events that would be two hundred and number of events that would be larger, say five hundred?
Sure. In our, um, it's twelve, up to twelve events per year, up to two hundred people. And then it's up to six events per year, up to five hundred people.
Okay. And then I assume you would have, you, your, all of the uh current provisions against outdoor amplified sound, et cetera, would be in play or in place for those.
Yes. Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, we'd be, we'd be subject to um, what's that one, but section seven, I believe, of the, of the noise ordinance.
Thank you.
Yeah. I mean, and to speak to that a little bit is like, a mo- a lot of the camps, I've talked with different facilities from like um Camp Holiday Trails and all, and that some of that accessory, it's like, it's not why we're building this place at all, but we do also have, we'll have like an awesome facility that's set up and other, it's a way that some of these other camps say, like, we wouldn't stay, we wouldn't be able to keep the facility going without some of this outside revenue and we're not using it. So it's not going to be like the first thing we go for, but if we have space to, and to let people um come in and use it from, you know, different retreats or things like that, um, is, would, would be great, I think. So. And, but of course, it's limited, like we said, so.
Thank you.
All right, awesome. I just have a couple of quick comments. Number one, thank you for what you're doing. I think this is perfect for the rural area. It's an opportunity to really engage and appreciate and respect the rural area. And I think what you're, what you're doing is awesome. Um, because, and I know we're not, we're not going to be making any motion on the special exception, but it sort of opens the door to critical slopes. And I saw some other critical slopes on the map. I'm just curious, I know this is also site plan related, but as you think about, you know, all your images that showed the buildings, the proposed buildings were all kind of like shadowed underneath, like they were hovering above the ground. Are there any sort of um maybe strategic approaches that you're thinking in terms of light, lightly building on the land, respecting the land through the construction of the buildings? And you have, can you provide us with a sense of phasing and what that might look like and what areas you might be starting with and how that might work?
That's, I'm gonna make one comment real quick. Yeah, so I think as far as the construction, um, one of the first conversations that Hub and I had after I went out to the property, there's kind of this um, a few really nice groves of mature hardwoods that are spaced out pretty nicely. And, you know, we discussed pure foundations and um, light footprints and kind of strategically keeping, you know, as many trees as possible and, and, you know, building among uh, the, the trees. And that was one of the first conversations that we had after we, um, you know, I had walked the whole site and we talked about how we wanted to lay it out. Um, and then, yeah, Hub will let you weigh in with any other items.
I mean, I'm, I'm super excited about this. So I've jumped the gun in the sense of I've been meeting with some build, different builders in town, like um, the guy does Geo Barnes and some other builders that do have, are known for their environmental.
Hmm, right.
Approach to landscape, because to me that's critical. And it's also is like, not just critical for this site, but it's also people repeat what they see.
Yeah.
So if we're showing good design, that's really thought out well, has a good flow, is light on the land, people will see that, get inspired by it and hopefully repeat it. So I do see even the buildings, everything we do, I mean, even the trash and things like, it's like, it's a mo- moment to teach.
Yeah, it's a living laboratory, right?
So I, so I get excited about that of um, how to go about that. And have we, a lot of the tent platforms that are going to be appears, um, but we're still, I mean, we haven't thought through every single building, but I know like, we're not going to start something until we have it down to, because earth care, I mean, it's like my main thing. And I want to get, you know, we're probably use some, for when we clear the road a little bit where some trees are going to come.
Yeah.
We mill those and reuse those on the site for some of the buildings, you know, so.
And water and sewer related to that, how are you, what are you thinking in terms of septic and?
Um, yeah, I don't, I mean, there's various options.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Um, so uh, right now it appears that there's, there's quite a bit of suitable soils, um, so likely a conventional system. Um, but, you know, we're not going to close the door on the possibility for, for an alternative, but um, conventional would definitely save on a lot of costs. Um, and so that's, that's kind of initially what, what we'll, we'll be targeting. Um, there's also um, the, uh, the state can permit um, certain uh types of, of privies in the primitive areas. And so composting toilets, things like that, those aren't out of the question either.
Got it. Okay.
Yeah. And I, and I've talked with some people in the health department about like that, because I also, again, like how we deal with waste is important. And um, so compost and toilet systems are like, they're on the gray area when, how they permit those still. So, but obviously we're not, we, we're not going to build something without, you know, they're signing off on it. So, but that's my hope is to try to create an educational.
Yeah.
Around that stuff, so.
Okay. Great. Thank you both.
Can I just follow up?
Sure.
Please do. Um, so if you could, if you, the map where you have, so let me ask you a question. The permanence residence, which is at the front of the property, will that have its own well and septic system? Okay, thank you.
There's already a well and septic in place.
Okay. So moving up to the sort of um circular part where you're hoping if you need places for staff, assuming you will need plus, will that be on a separate well and septic system for that little collection of houses there?
So it'll uh likely be an individual um house to an individual well and septic system, just because that.
It's easy, I, I get it. So, so you're going to have one there and then you're going to have, I think there's four up there or something like that.
Or we could connect up to two houses to each system.
So you could have two, uh, one what, uh, one well, one well for two per, per two houses.
Correct, you can have one well for two.
One, two, three, so that's now, you have three wells, three septic systems. And then in the, in the sort of the, the hub place there, where you have, where you have the welcome center and the garden center and the library, um, I assume there'll be a common system there.
Yes.
Okay. Then down here, uh, where you're close, where you're, you're kind of close to Walnut Creek Park, there would be, um, and the primitive, the primitive areas are there, I assume you'd have some primitive, some, some way to get water to people up there. Oh, 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 there we are. Primitive two, you'd have, you tell me.
Sure. So the um, this scope, we have submitted our central water and sewer request, and that's kind of, it's specific to the main camp area, because that's the area where we're requesting to have more than two connections to one well.
Okay.
Or one septic system. We've requested four connections.
In the main camp area.
In the main camp. Other, other than that, in the other areas, there won't be more than two connections to a singular well or septic system.
And then what are we doing again in the primitive, in the, in the three primitive areas?
Um, those, I, I mean, unless required um by any state code or county code, those all, all, you know, those won't have well or septic systems.
And over by the pavilion?
Uh, a- a- again, that would only be required if, if, if we're required to put something in per building code down there.
Then I will speak for, I will, I will lift up my, my colleague uh who talks about disability. How are we going to service kids who are in his mobile to rush back to the main camp area?
From the pavilion area? I mean, well, one place that we um utilize, we have a hay wagon set up on it with a truck or a tractor sometimes that we move people around that way as well. So there is ways, because I do, I know what you mean. It's a long distance. Well, often when we're out in places like that, we often bring like those big Gatorade containers full of water. And um, yeah, so we have thought that we have mules and gators to move people around to, mules being like the vehicle, not the actual four-legged animal. So.
All right. I think we are good with that. Uh, appreciate it. Let's open it up to the members of the audience. And I do have a sign up sheet. Um, I'll go through each of the names on the sign up sheet. Uh, just as a reminder, each speaker is allotted three minutes. Individuals cannot relinquish their three minutes to another speaker. And please give any written statements that you might have to the clerk. Um, I'll call out the first name and then the next name will be on deck, so be ready to come up. Um, the first name is Mark Jackson. And Scott Cunningham is on deck. Good evening.
My written comments were in advance. I believe that they were distributed.
Right. Just if you could pull the mic down so we could hear you and then state your name and your general location of residence, please.
Thank you for the speaking opportunity. My name is Ralph Mark Jackson. I live at thirty-eight twenty-two Red Hill Road in the Samuel Miller District with my wife Ellen. We own TMP one oh one fifty-eight, which adjoins the east side of TMP one oh one twenty, one of the parcels in the application. We've done our pop, we've owned our property since twenty twenty, living on it since twenty twelve. It's heavily forested, except for the acreage immediately surrounding our home, which is about two hundred feet from the property line and about one thousand feet from the promotes, proposed primitive camp areas two and three. We try to be good stewards of our property and recognize that what happens on it does not necessarily stop the property line. We became aware of the Living Earth School Plan through a letter last month from the Planning Division. My initial reaction was not positive, very few of us like change, right? Especially when it's right next door. In the past month, though, we've learned more about the school's mission and approaches and developed a cautious acceptance of what they want to do. As far as of joining, of adjoining property, though, we do have concerns regarding specifics. Number one is camp and cooking fires. And the plans for fire prevention and suppression to mitigate wildfires, we're especially concerned about fires in the primitive camp areas two and three, identified as zone three on sheet six of the February twenty-seventh concept plan revision. Fires in the primitive camp areas pose a higher risk than the main camp area. It's because the camp primitive areas are thickly wooded and bordered by more densely vegetated areas, identifies as zone four in the concept plane. These zones are a natural tinderbox whose thickly wood nature would impede access to the fire department, in contrast to the main camp area, which is more accessible to fire trucks. Prevalent winds also come from the west and would fan flames in our direction in the case of wildfire. Given things we've seen elsewhere, the risk of a potential devastation is very concerning. Luckily, there have been numerous fire weather segments in twenty twenty-five already with warnings almost weekly. We don't know if fires will definitely be built in the primitive camp areas. It's our hope they will not. After all, we only live one thousand feet away. Our second concern is uses of White Oak Creek. Project narratives from August twenty-four and February twenty-fifth, twenty-five refer to the creek as a creek as a designated water supply source in a fire emergency. The February twenty-fifth narrative adds, if it is determined during site plan that additional water supply is necessary, the applicant will provide adequate water storage tanks on site. This statement leaves open the possibility of using the creek as an initial water source supplemented by auxiliary storage. White Oak Creek flows through our property and I know it's not a reliable source for firefighting. Heavy rains and snow melt can give the illusion of a significant flow, but many times I've seen it dramatically reduced. The creek supports many flora and fauna and its current state is an excellent campus for teaching camp attendees about various elements of nature. Anything affected, affecting its flow and water quality, though, would hurt the ecosystem it serves. We summarily oppose any use of White Oak Creek for firefighting or other purposes, which would negatively habit, affect the habitat, the stream flow and think it should be specifically ruled out at the outset.
Great, thank you. And I did note your comment as you were walking up that we did receive your written comments. Appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Thank you.
Scott Cunningham and Joe Murray is on deck.
Good evening.
Evening.
Thank you for the time. Um, I, uh, former employee of Living Earth School and helped them get to this point, uh, along with everybody else on the board. Uh, they have a tremendous twenty-three year record of teaching and educating families about the environment, about our nature, how to be a good steward of nature, where they uh teach the young and the parents how to be a part of this world and not destroy it. Uh, I think it's a great organization and it has now the opportunity to live on as a nonprofit for many, many years to come. As you can see, it has tremendous support and it has tens of thousands of people that have gone through the program. This is a regional gem. As my market analysis, we pull from the whole East Coast, families bring their kids here in the summer to experience this program. It has the potential to be a larger regional tourist and education center for nature, bigger than anything on the East Coast. It really does. And it's got the, the mind share and it already has the traction through every state on the East Coast. Um, again, it's teaching stewardish, stewardship, it's teaching people how to understand how we live in this world, what's invasive, how to take care of the land, how to take care of nature, how to be a part of it. Um, and I think it's just a great opportunity that I hope you guys support. They've been looking for years for land. It is a tremendous, beautiful piece of land that's not going to be developed in a way that it could be. And it's right next to Walnut Creek Park, which makes it a bonus. So, thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. Joe Murray is next and Valerie Goodman is on deck.
My name's Joe Murray. I'm from Baltimore County, um, Maryland. Um, I have a house in Nelson um County. And I've been working with Hub for about twenty-five years. Um, Nature Connection Movement is something that's been around for quite a while and there's hundreds of schools, but the Living Earth does it better than just about anyone else I've seen. I helped found ancestral knowledge. And one of the things that happens at these schools, which I see around the nation, is you'll have um plant species that flourish that usually don't exist in that area for the last couple hundred years. They tend to come back. Um, the animal populations tend to rapidly increase. Um, and it's just through the um, the methods of tending the land that um, that we've been taught. The other thing is um, seeing the teenagers we work with, I've never seen programs as powerful as these ones, you know, friends that work for Outward Bound or Knowles or some of these other companies, but with Living Earth, it's just, it, it's awesome. Um, it's, it's life-changing and it does it at a level that I've seen very few other places achieve. And so I was wishing maybe some of the younger people came here just so you could see like the light in their eyes and, and how fully alive they actually are. But um, this, they've been looking for a home for a long time and it's just hard to keep jumping around from place to place. And once um, we have that home again, I think you're going to see something really special and beautiful. And I expect other organizations like UVA and other uh nature conservancy and stuff to really um be impressed with, with their help, what goes on on the land. Thank you.
Thank you. Valerie Goodman and Catherine Abbott is on deck.
Hi, thank you for, for giving me an opportunity to speak. My name's Valerie Goodman. I've lived in Charlottesville for thirty-seven years. I've been a nurse at UVA for thirty years. And at retirement, I wanted to find something outside of myself that had meaning and served the community. And I am now the board president of the Living Earth School. And my children went through the Living Earth School as youngsters. When I had that teenager and I just wanted to put him in a boat and send him down the river, I gave him to Hub and Hub put him in a boat and took him down the river. And he's been part of my.
I say, returned.
Bring him back, yeah, um, which I'm grateful for. And so I've seen Living Earth from the inside as a parent. And I've seen it from the inside as a board member. And I can promise you, this land would be lovingly tended. I'm sure we've all had connection to the land in our lives and I've been on this land at least a dozen times. And we all text each other, ooh, I just found a beautiful spot with pine cones. Or this rock is incredible. I can see a child hopping from one to the next. So I want you to know that this land is part of our family of Living Earth School, even though we are not quite there to hit the green light. Um, I can promise you that we're going to be good neighbors and I invite anybody in the community to have my personal phone number to reach out if they want to have contact with us. And uh, it, it's going to be a legacy if, if y'all see fit to push it through. Thank you.
Thank you. Last one on my list is Catherine Abbott.
Everyone, thanks. It's great to see you. Um.
Excuse me, Ms. Abbott, would you mind moving the mic down? Thank you very much.
How's that?
Perfect.
It's great to see you all. Thanks for having us here. Um, my family and I moved to Charlottesville in twenty nineteen after my husband retired from United States Navy. My children grew up in places like San Diego and New Orleans. And as a farm girl from the eastern shore of Maryland, I wanted them to experience nature connection. I enrolled them in Living Earth School. And I believe that we protect what we love and we love what we know. And my children had the experience through Living Earth Schools to immerse themselves in the natural world and to come to know and love the natural world, the way that I did when I was growing up in a rural area. So this has resulted in them creating community with their peers and with the natural world. It's going to affect them for the rest of their lives. Um, I've served as a board member and I am now employed by Living Earth School. I look forward to working with all of you on this project. I really, really appreciate that you value environmental stewardship and education for our community. It's really critical, especially in um twenty twenty-five. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here? Yes, please come up. Just say your name. No problem. Just say your name and.
Yeah.
We do that on purpose. We pull it out so you can, no, please, go ahead.
Hi, uh, my name is Lisa Gorsh. Um, I.
I live on a property that abuts the Living Earth School property. And well, we share about half of the eastern property line. The half that includes the north fork of the Hardware River. Change is hard. Anytime a development is proposed, I panic. But I have to say that I am totally in support of the Living Earth Sanctuary for various reasons. One, I have been a teacher here in Albemarle County. I have taught both middle school students and high school students. I have taught biology. And I have consistently found that when I took my students outside, really didn't matter how far we went, just taking them outside completely changed their attitudes and brought them to life and triggered an interest in our natural world. So I am delighted that this organization is focused on doing that in at a much larger scale. I also just want to say that I raised, my husband and I raised two children on this property that abuts the Living Earth Sanctuary property. And we had so many magical times with our children down along the Hardware River. It is a magical place, and I think it's wonderful. The prospect of other children and adults being able to enjoy it is just fantastic. And the last thing I'll say is that as of just a few years ago, there were still freshwater mussels in the Hardware River. And now I've been note, I mean, I go to the Hardware River several times a week. It is a meditation spot for me. And I can also tell you that there are more fish in the Hardware River than we've seen in quite a while. And truly, the last thing I will say is that one of the most incredible surprises of my life occurred when my daughter was maybe eleven. She would go off into nature. And one time we panicked because she didn't come back. Well, what had happened was she had gone down to the Hardware River, found an orphaned baby beaver and couldn't leave it. We spent three days going back and forth to the river to bottle feed this orphaned beaver. It was an incredible experience. Unfortunately, the beaver ended up becoming an appetizer for some member of the wildlife, but this is the type of thing that can happen down there, and I think it's just wonderful.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Is there anyone else here this evening who would like to speak? Yes, sir.
It was late to the party, so I apologize for not getting my name on the list.
No problem.
My name is John Outland. I'm in a unique position of being a board member. I've also had a daughter that's attended summer camp at the Living Earth School. I was an outdoor educator for twenty-five years and been a special needs educator for over thirty years. If you don't think there's a nature deficit disorder in our kids right now, and that these are a large problem facing our youth, you probably don't have any. Having three teenagers, what to do with them in the summer was kind of always the existential question that you ask yourself. How do I entertain them? How do I keep them growing? How do I keep them educated? How do I keep them in a healthy environment? Both my wife and I work full times, so that's not often an easy thing to do. Knowing that there are places like the Living Earth School that not only entertain your children, but educate your children, there's nothing that makes me happier than when I get home at night. It's dark. There's a toad in our driveway. My daughter takes her camera out. She takes a picture of it. She sends it to a group text of kids that she hasn't seen in two years, but she went to camp with. And then they have a fifteen minute conversation about what kind of toad it is, how big it is, and they break things down. This is dying in our society. If we can establish a place that allows kids to get outside, I think there are, I don't want to get too philosophical philosophical because I know there's, this is more about nuts and bolts and making sure everything. But I think there's things in your DNA that you get released when you get outside. I think that this is, Hub has kind of figured out how to do this in a way that kind of maximizes both joy for kids as well as inspiring awe, as well as creating a kind of an environment where kids go out and they educate other kids in the in the kind of the beauty of nature. Finding two hundred and eighty-seven acres that is not loblawy pines is hard to do. It's very hard to do in Albemarle County. Finding affordable land, finding land that has waterfrontage is extremely hard to do. This is a find. I think this is a green light moment for the Living Earth School, and I look forward to being able to work with them, work with the county and figure out ways that we can maximize what the land has to offer, but also do it in a very responsible way. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who'd like to speak?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Jack Ontis. I grew up in Charlottesville and first attended programs at the Living Earth School close to fifteen years ago. I work there now and have now worked there as a summer camp instructor and as year round staff for the past seven years. And can speak firsthand to how the programming that the Living Earth School offers has changed my life, has changed the lives of all of the peers who grew up attending these programs alongside me, has changed the lives of the children that I teach now, not only in their knowledge and care for place for nature and what this land would offer, care for a specific place to watch and tend towards it over years, but also to people. Like Joey was talking about earlier, to see teenagers with vision and clarity of what they want out of life, of how to help other people. The Living Earth School teaches all that without you even knowing it. It's beautiful. And to have land like this, a land where you can be together with those people and be in this place and truly take care of it is in the long run, as I see it, not only going to help out this piece of land, but any piece of land these students touch in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? All right, seeing none here. Is there anyone online?
No, sir, there isn't.
Okay, with that, I will ask the applicant to come back up if they would like to speak to any of the questions or concerns that were raised by public.
Thank you for the opportunity to to respond to some of the comments made. I definitely want to take the opportunity to speak to Mr. Jackson's comments about fire safety. Hub and I, when, you know, when we're talking about his, his, his programming, and one of the first things that that he says that he discusses with his students is, you know, is is being in nature and then also, you know, some of the hazards that come with that. And a part of that is, is, you know, knowing just how to be responsible with campfires. That's that's a huge, huge part of educational programming. I will also, I just want to note, it is in the county supplemental regs for boarding camps that any provisions for outdoor cooking and campfires are subject to the Albemarle County Fire Official Approval. So that's also in the supplemental regs. This property will be subject to that. As far as designating White Oak Creek as a, as a, as a water source for for firefighting, that really came up out of kind of some initial conversations with with the county and the fire official and discussing, you know, where we can find water supply systems and if if we need to supplement with water tanks. All of that will be kind of worked through at site plan and subject to building code and kind of depends on how big our buildings get on the site. In a lot of cases, we might fall below those those thresholds. And, you know, what most, most likely, some, some type of tank or something, depending on building size, will be required. But in the event of a fire, if there's sufficient water in White Oak Creek, I can probably assure you the fire department isn't going to overlook that as, as, as a resource to help fight that fire. So, you know, these are all just kind of things that we're working through at the special use permit phase to say, okay, we've thought about this. We see a path forward. And I think in the end, it's really just going to depend on how big those buildings get. That's just the one comment that I wanted to respond to. Thank you. Yeah, absolutely.
When I walked the land with the Virginia Department of Forestry, I mentioned the creek. I'm like, what about this White Oak Creek? Some people have talked about it for fire suppression. He's like, he's like, we're not going to fiddle with this. We're going to use something and just go right over to Walnut Creek and hit the reservoir. He's like, that's what we've done before in the area. It's the biggest water source. It's just what we're going to do. We're already set up to do that well. And we've thought it through the plan of action. So more, more times than not, White Oak Creek was pitched by some different people in the county, but the Department of Forestry guys, like, there's a forest fire. We're just going to the big lake and utilizing that. So I don't know if that fully addresses it, but that's was one thought.
All right. Thank you both. Okay, well, with that, I think I'll close the public hearing and open it up to the commission for discussion. Anybody like to kick us off? Commissioner Bivens, would you like to kick us off?
I I am supportive of this, of this initiative. I I understand it. I hope that I will just basically say, I hope that the website shows a bit more diversity on it the next time I go to it, and it doesn't sort of look like Albemarle lives here. That's the kind of thing that annoys me in some very special ways. And that needs to change. And so I will just lay it out there. You know, that's what I do now. I don't have to play nice anymore if I don't want to. I'm not the chair. That's your role. And so I do agree, and I I particularly like the fact that it's, it is, it is right next to Walnut Creek Park. I think that does something that we've talked about over the course of year. How do we sort of increase, increase the the footprint of those kind of spaces? So I'm happy about that. I'll be interested to see, we're going to go from an undeveloped land to, we can say it's going to be light touchy, but you're going to have six sewage systems, six wells. So it's going to go to a place that's got a bit more development to it. Clearly less than twenty-three, clearly less than twenty-three. And so I'm pleased, I'm pleased, I'm pleased that that's happening. I hope, having driven the, having driven that road in both a sports car and an SUV, I would hope that that, that little curve there does get better, does get some treatment to it, because I think that would help traffic down, down Red Hill Road in a way that I think would be both beneficial to people coming off the property and people traveling down the property. So I would be supportive to that as people are listening, as people are listening to those issues. So that's all I have to say, Chair. I support it.
Awesome. As we go along, if you had any questions or concerns about any of the additions that were made in terms of edits, you might want to mention that too. I don't know if you, if you have or not.
I I appreciate, and having, having, having been on numerous boards in this community where we go to places for outside. And I'm, and I'm happy that they're going to have that ability. I would say if there was any place that I would like to see a bit more tightening up, it would be the external events. That still feels a bit loose to me, and I'm not going to propose language here because this is not the time. But I would hope before it gets from here to the supervisors that there would be a bit more tightening up on what I say is five.
Yeah.
It's condition five there. That's the piece that gave me a bit of, when I understood it wasn't just for them, but it was for the community writ large, I would like to see a bit more. I would just like, like there to be a bit more narrative perhaps from the applicant.
Addressing.
So supervisors would understand what they're saying, yes or no to.
And there was also a request by the applicant to make an edit to number five, I think, right?
Yes.
And that was for any event with more than two hundred attendees.
Going.
I think it had something to do with, you guys might have to help out with the language here, but it had something to do with shuttle.
Yes.
Required.
Yes.
Above two hundred.
Above two hundred. It was above two hundred.
All right.
Yes. That's the piece that I think it would be helpful in the narrative from the applicant to be able to provide our supervisors. Okay?
Yep, great. All right, Mr. Carazana.
Yeah, I'm like, like Commissioner Bivens, I'm in support of this. Think it'll be a great, and, and very much in line with a great function and very much in line with a comprehensive plan and the things that we're trying to do in the rural areas. Yeah, one of my concerns, and it didn't come up, and I think it'll be something that'll be handled in, in the site plan, is, is parking and particularly for the events again. There, there are some things that are kind of nebulous around the events and how it's going to be handled, particularly with parking, right? There was no parking lots there that. So I think that's going to be a, a potential issue that's contrary to what it's, what the mission is, the core mission here. We don't want to pave or create a bunch of gravel lots. But if you are going to have up to five hundred people, they got to get there somehow. And I don't think there's clarity on that. So I don't know if we wanted to craft something here on the board, but, or perhaps see something that's handled in the site plan review, but yeah, I'm, I'm in, I'm in support.
Mr. Clayburn?
Certainly in support. I can't think of a better way to use the land, and my colleagues have brought up some good points that I think would be good for the record. So, thank you.
Yeah, I'm in general support. They were, Living Earth School, actually, I believe they were using the Sugar Hollow Camp in my neck of the woods for a while. And I, I don't have anything, but say positive things. They were very good neighbors to to us in Sugar Hollow. I never had any complaints. I will say that that, that Red Hill Road is used highly by cyclists as an alternative way into Charlottesville.
Yeah.
So, so just watch out, be considerate of cyclists. There, I certainly hope if they can increase the paved margin on that side someday, that that would be really helpful to everyone. I do have some concerns about the, the events, particularly, you know, the same ones that everyone else said in terms of like the the, the size of those events for external people and how you accommodate parking and so forth. So I think that definitely needs some clarity.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Moore?
Sure. Like my colleagues, I'm also supportive of this, and I just wanted to highlight. You know, we have these, these programs in the county to reduce property taxes, and that can be through conservation easement, it can be through use value. And so often, sometimes, to be honest, I'm not really sure what the public benefit is. People can't go on these private lands. It's just like very large tracts of of land that we're giving up millions of dollars in tax revenue. I'm never quite sure why, except that, I guess, conservation, but that's, how does that serve people living in the county? This actually serves people in the county, which I think is great. People get to come onto the place and actually experience it and be a part of it through educational programs. So thumbs up.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Firehawk, any comments, closing comments?
Yes, thank you. I, I think this is a very appropriate use of this site. And one, one thing I find very encouraging is that I believe the Living Earth School is going to leave it better than they found it. It is a really nice site, but it's been impacted, just like any, any land that's been used in the past for farming and other activities. So I think, I think that it will end up in in better shape. I am also concerned about the sort of the nebulousness, I guess, of the events. I understand they're for fundraising purposes, but they might want to take a look, and this is nothing that I'm going to put in emotion or anything, but they might want to take a look at what Buchanan did when they had to, they have a fair, a big fair event down on the river, and they designed a parking lot with trees planted such that you can park in between the trees. So, and it's not it's like a tree parking lot. There's no pavement whatsoever, and the roots help hold the soil in place, and it provides habitat the rest of the year. So maybe think about some maybe think about some really creative ways to stabilize areas that they might use for parking. And I know they'll have to get a zoning clearance from the county. So they'll get to that level of deep, some of those details once they, they get into that event planning. But I think it's, it's a great thing to have environmental education in our community. I've been an environmental educator for 30 years myself and I've done summer camps myself as well. And I'm, I'm really excited about continuing to create the next generation of environmental stewards who can maybe sit on this dais one day and think about these projects.
Thanks. I may turn it back to you and admit it, Commissioner Firehawk for a motion, but I'll just echo a lot of what was said here. I'm also very supportive of this in my, you know, as we've talked a lot about and continue to talk about rural preservation. In my mind, if, if we can respect, engage and activate and preserve and protect, that's kind of the perfect sauce of how we work with our rural area that we're so blessed to have. And so under the heading of respect, thinking about, you know, the amount of time that was committed by the applicant to looking at the species that are on the land. Just thinking about the light touch with which I would highly anticipate you will use on during and on the development of this land. Engaging and activating sort of goes without question, right? That's the whole purpose of, of being part of this. And then preserving, I think through a vegetation management plan, you mentioned the stewardship plan, those ways to actively continue while utilizing and engaging with the preservation of the land, I think is critically important. And I think you guys talk, check all the boxes there. I'll, you know, just for the record, I'll just echo also the concern about some of the extracurricular events that are going to be held there and just the care and management of those. And I live right off a plank road and I bike around here all the time. And I know that Red Hill is a great road to drive, by the way. I mean, it's beautifully designed, but it's also one that you have to be very careful on. So that's just something to be considering as this moves forward to the, to the Board of Supervisors. So with that, I'll ask, is anybody willing to, interested in making a motion?
Mr. Chair, just to point a clarification, I, I'm hearing you all talk about the, maybe you'll end up with a motion. Sounds like maybe it won't. I don't know. But as far as the special events, talking about number five, I heard you all say many things, but I think I heard a common theme, just trying to figure out what the deal was with the parking. Is that, is that kind of a consensus thing that you wanted us to look at a little bit with them?
I don't know. I don't want to speak for everybody here, but I guess, I guess I'll just throw something out there. What's the parking? I think it's the amount of activity on the site that generated just by the bodies that might be there. The frequency of events, I think, I know that that's capped at 12, I think, per year. Just, it's just an awareness, right, of, of that.
It's more of an awareness. It's something that you're not, you're necessarily looking for.
My sense is that it's covered in other ways. So especially, you know, by permits and things like that. It's just something.
Fantastic. Thank you for the clarification.
Commissioner, well, we also, I thought you were going to actually mention the conditions. There is a condition. Not only the edits that staff presented, but also the request of the applicant. Do we want to make that change within conditions? And Commissioner Firehawk, are you willing to make a motion?
She can't make, she can't talk while that's up there. I neither have her.
Can't multitask. Okay. Yeah, I got you.
Okay.
So, so if the, if the commission wants to keep it fairly simple, my recommendation would be that the motion be, if, if the commission's inclined to recommend approval, that recommend approval with either the staff recommended conditions or the applicant requested conditions based on the, on the will of the commission.
Okay. Keep it simple that way. Okay.
That would be my suggestion. Yes, sir.
And that with the applicant recommended conditions would also take into consideration staff's recommended.
Well, they're slightly different in some respects. So the, the applicant during its presentation, I think, had a, a series of recommendations that were, or requests that were different than staff's recommendations in some respect.
Thought it was just one, but maybe I missed it.
These, these are the applicant requested conditions that were received earlier today.
Didn't change these.
The text of number five looks the same.
I thought, I thought for number five, they were.
Or did not say in excess of 200? I thought it did. Oh, I thought I saw that. Could be mistaken though.
Can we go back to the?
We go to the staff one? Yeah, I thought I said that, but I could be wrong. For any event with more than 200 attendees, always must arrive and depart by shuttle.
Same, but they just wordsmithed.
Yeah.
That's it.
Is that not the same or?
I think the, the other difference between the two is the condition number 11 would the applicant requests also allowing amplified sound at the welcome area and not just the main camp area. As far as.
That's in number 11, right?
That's 11. Yeah, it's number 11. Yeah. As far as number five.
This said excess instead, so.
Does staff have any, have any concerns with the applicant's request on number 11? Well, or five. And or, and five. How about we do this? Let's start at number three. And we'll work our way through each condition, make sure the staff is recommending number three as you see that, that, that's acceptable. Yeah. And then number five, the applicant, can you show the applicants please?
The applicant requested in that last sentence of number five, that rather than requiring all attendees to arrive by shuttle.
In excess.
That attendees after the first 200 arrive by shuttle.
I mean, I don't have a concern with that. I don't know if anybody's concerned with that. Okay. And then.
But that was, that was what the applicant had recommended there.
Okay. So we are all in agreement. Number five's good as the applicant.
And then staff on number eight here was recommending that one to be struck altogether. Because we have regulations that cover that.
Yeah.
And then we're at number 11. Which allows not only the main camp area, but also the welcome area to have outdoor amplified sound. And it would restrict it between nine in the morning or not permitted after nine before nine AM.
Anybody have any concerns with that? Staff, do you have any concerns?
One thing I'll point out on the outdoor amplification. As you can see here, the red distances are the distances to nearby dwellings based on the staff recommendation that the amplified sound will maybe in the yellow main camp area here.
Yeah.
And the blue arrows show the distances if you allow the welcome area to also have the amplified sound. The main difference really, the one place the distance has changed significantly is right here between, this is the welcome pavilion and this is that nearest dwelling. That distance drops from 1,250 feet to 690 feet. That, that's a, that's a noticeable change in, in where the location of the audio source relative to adjacent property.
They would still have to comply with the county require guidelines for decibel levels, right?
It would still have to comply with the, the decimal limits. Those decimal limits are, are measured on a very short period of time.
Right.
A minute possibly. So, you know, even something that's not crossing the 50 decibel limit can be quite audible in a rural setting. The applicants did offer a, a time limit on amplification in that area that may address the concern, at least for late nights, but it is likely that you know, music played at the welcome pavilion would be more likely to be audible at that nearest dwelling with that change.
So I guess in, in one sense, I mean, I, I'm thinking out loud here, but if we went with the applicant's request between, I'm, I'm wondering if the, if the, if the citizen, if the public has the opportunity to comment on that change, they can comment between now and the Board of Supervisors. So the other thing is we could request or require a sound study. But I don't know if that's really necessary. I don't have any concerns with this and I know that that timeline between now and the, okay, everybody's giving me the.
No, 700 feet away is pretty far.
Yeah.
With trees. Yeah.
Okay. So.
So essentially if I'm, if I'm looking at this here, would the app is proposed, if we added the, the last part of it of striking number eight.
Correct.
I think that's what you all.
Yep. I think that's right.
Yep.
Everybody good?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
So it sounds like if that's the consensus that the motion would be to recommend approval of this SP with the applicant recommended conditions, except for condition eight, which would be struck. Is that the consensus?
Thank you. So now if we can allow Commissioner Firehawk to come back. But I want to put you on the spot, Commissioner Firehawk, but would you like to make a motion? And have you heard the discussion about the conditions?
Yes, I have. But if I mess it up, I'm sure our counselor were, will correct me. Because it was a couple of times where we look at the screen where I couldn't see it. But let me just get on with it. And then, like I said, if I don't have it exactly right, please correct me.
We got you.
I move to recommend approval of SP 2024-00022, Living Earth School with the conditions as recommended by the applicant and striking condition number eight.
Sounds good. Just to, did you say 2024 dash 22 or 25?
It's 22.
I said SP 2024-00022, which is in the staff report.
Isn't it 25? 25 is on the cover. Maybe I'm.
I'm looking under possible motions.
Yes, I see what you mean. It's just that there's a conflict on the. Cover. There's a typo on the cover. It says 25 on the cover, but this 22.
It's 22 everywhere else.
All right. Perfect. All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll take it.
Awesome. Motion and a second. Any discussion? All right. Could we have the roll, please?
Ms. Firehawk?
Aye, aye.
Mr. Bivens?
Aye.
Mr. Carazana?
Aye.
Mr. Missile?
Aye.
Mr. Clayburn?
Aye.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Morden?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate you coming out. And the work you do. All right. We'll move on to committee reports. Are there any committee reports that someone would like to share? Anyone would like to share? No? Yes.
So Chair, this time I have the paper in front of me. We had a Places 29 Hydraulic Community Advisory Committee. You know, we had that, that thing. And so a new thing that you should know, well, we had a meeting, we had, we, we received a presentation on the Lamb's Lane Loop Road, which is actually quite interesting. It's, it's all about the giving another way to get people out of the Lamb's Lane campus because there's only one way in and one way out right now at some point in time.
Yeah.
And it also takes into consideration the work that's being done on what used to be called Center Two, but is now called Albemarle Career Exploration Academy on Lamb's Lane. Ooh. I'm not going to try and tell you what I believe it should be, but I think it, what it is. So that, that's new news. And so I, I would say if at some point we can see the Lamb's Lane Loop Road, so that would be interesting because there was a, a little small fact that got told. That intersection at Lamb's Lane and Lamb's Road and Hydraulic is the highest pedestrian crossing intersection in Albemarle County. 3,000 people, steps of pedestrian crossings take place there during the week. There you go.
Thank you. Commissioner Carazana? All right, Commissioner Clayburn? Commissioner Moore, any updates?
Just that we had a RIO 29 Community Advisory Committee as well. There were no proposals for new construction, but we did have a lovely presentation in the Economic Development Office. So it was a nice.
Good segue.
Today.
All right. Review the Board of Supervisors meeting from February 26th. And March 5th.
Thank you, sir. We've actually had four or three meetings since then. One was the 26th, which the the recommended budget was presented to the Board of Supervisors. The March 5th one was a regular business meeting, although they did take public comment on the budget, but they also had an extensive discussion on the Chestnut Grove. Reserving a special use permit for mobile homes in the southern part of the county off Chestnut Grove Road. That actually failed on a three to three vote. So since then, we had a meeting last night, again, on the work session for the budget. And jumping ahead, there's one tomorrow night on the budget as well. So.
Great. Thank you. AC 44 update. We got a good one tonight already, but.
I was going to jump on that right there and say, I really don't have anything for you. In fact, I think I'm going to take that off the agenda because we are we're getting, you know, we're meeting with you very frequently.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, great. New business, old business, right, Mr. Follow-up?
Mr. Chair, I do have one question. As we, I heard tonight that we are aiming to have the comprehensive plan adopted by the end of this calendar year. Are there any other groups that you and the vice chair and staff are talking about bringing in just to provide an update where there's transportation or anything like that, just as we plan to get this thing over to finish line?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I'm just distracted beginning that question.
No, no worries. No worries. I'll repeat it. Just in, in general, are there any other groups that you all are looking at to bring in to provide an update on their planning that might inform our conversations? Whether it's transportation, Microcat, how is that doing? Or whatever it may be, like we had on housing, for example. Any of those stakeholder groups that you're looking at maybe bringing in to help inform the, the final leg of the comprehensive plan for us?
So the chapters remaining are what community facilities, transportation. I'm doing this off the top of my head, a resiliency and the housing chapter. Still need to do the housing chapter. So it wasn't my intent to bring someone to speak to you all. We could, we could touch on a few topics. I can definitely, I heard you mentioned Microcat as something that you might be interested in. Is there?
Only if you think it's valuable. Or like you're, yeah, if you think it's valuable.
I, I, I know that Kevin can speak. He's been deeply involved with the Microcat program. And so we can be sure to touch upon some of that when we get to the transit, transit part of the conference plan. In fact, you know, that's going to be a longer meeting. So I'll be sure that we do give you a bit broader on that particular subject if, as need be.
Might be. It's a great reminder. It might be helpful as we think about housing, for example. Maybe we have Dr. Path here or somebody come in.
She will be here.
It'll be, so maybe it'll be part of the presentation anyway. Good reminder.
Well, I, I do want to add on to that. So the housing in particular would be helpful to have an update on where are we with our housing stock, you know, is our policy working? Is it not working? Are we going to put something in the comprehensive plan for the next 20 years that already is not proven to be functioning? I mean, are we continuing to lose traction here? So I, I think it would be good to get an update. I know for me personally, it would be good. Yeah, for housing in particular.
And, and Chair, I would offer that it would be helpful not to get the update on the same day that we're discussing.
Absolutely. Not the same day. I think prior, prior to.
So, Mr. Barnes, maybe we should powwow with, and we can kind of strategize on where we're headed.
Thank you. I think it'd be a great idea.
Okay. Great. Thanks. All right. And any other, any other communication conversation?
I just want to make sure that when we adopted the calendar at the beginning of the year, date ended up for next week.
Oh, thank you.
And that is not our intent to hold something next week. So apologies for that.
Okay.
That confusion that got onto the, the original calendar.
All good. All right.
Our next meeting will be 3:25 at 4:00 PM.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Barnes. Did you say what time?
So, okay, I'll go ahead and how about I adjourn us? And when I do that, I'll say what time. So I will adjourn us to the next Planning Commission meeting, which will be held on Tuesday, March 25th, 2024 at 4:00 PM.
Thank you.